Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our October 20th meeting of Michigan City Council Council to order. If everyone could please silence all electronic devices and let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a silent prayer.
Through the flag, United States of America, through the republic which is my nation, God, visible, every seat, just this throne.
Ms. Nyla, on the roll call, please.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Ms. Deitch.
Present.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Present.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Jigus.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have nine present and no one absent.
Okay, we have a quorum. Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Approval of the minutes of our regular October 6th meeting. Has everyone had a chance to approve, review the minutes? And are there any corrections?
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion to approve by Councilman Don Preswellinsky and a second by Councilman Dabney. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Minister of Food. Reports of standing committees. Finance Committee.
Yep, Finance Committee meeting of October 20th. Finance Committee meeting was called to order at 6:03 PM by Chairman Dabney to review claims filed since our last meeting. Committee members Tillman and Paul Preswellinsky were present, as well as council members Matt, Jigus, and Simmons. City Controller Yvonne Hoffmaster was in attendance as well. Claims reviewed tonight totaled $54,276.94 from the Riverboat Fund and $0 from Boyd Development for a total docket of $54,276.94. There were a couple of other issues discussed that involved board of works and some other things, and those issues were resolved. Councilwoman Tillman moved to recommend approval of the docket with a second by Councilman Dabney. The motion was approved unanimously. On a motion made by Councilman Dabney and a second by Councilman Paul Preswellinsky, the meeting was adjourned at 6:08 PM. The summary of claims goes as follows. From the Riverboat Fund, Ace Auto Body Service, $350. Acme Communications, Inc., $385. Brinkman's Towing and Auto, $175. Dave's Garage and Auto Parks, Inc., $275. Enterprise Rent-A-Car, $604.55. Great America Financial Services, $685.69. Harris Precast, Inc., $620. Just Add H2O, Inc., $620. Comcast, $129.69. Comcast, again, $432.01. And to the City Controller of Michigan City, $50,000. And these were contractual services to deal with the old Lighthouse Museum. And just to make sure that everything lines up with the actual docket, things that were paid in the EFT payment came from the two Comcast payments and City Controller for $50,000. For a total from the Riverboat Fund of $54,276.94. And once again, from the Boyd Development Fund, $0. For a total claims docket, once again, of $54,276.94. And that concludes tonight's Finance Committee meeting minutes.
Thank you, Councilman. Claims docket, October 20th, 2020, Riverboat Boyd Claims Docket. Fund 2042 Riverboat Claims, $3,715.24. EFT, fund transfer, $50,561.70. Fund 2031 Boyd Claims, $0. Total claims, $54,276.94. Is there a motion to approve the claims?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Dabney and a second by Councilman Paul Preswellinsky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Reports of special or select committees.
Mr. President.
Councilman Preswellinsky.
I just wanted to relate to the general public that we had a workshop tonight on roadway repair, and I distributed a workbook prepared by the city attorney on, it's the Pazer system. And we had a good discussion with our street department foreman. So I hope that a lot of people will look at the book and have developed a list for their areas that they represent and get it turned in, and so we can have a roundtable discussion with the mayor on paving in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other reports of special or select committees? Okay, have it done, move on. Reports of other city officers and departments. We have Keith Campbell, Michigan City Police Department, who presented leadership awards for various officers that exhibited extraordinary heroism during the May 31st, 2020 protest. Keith Campbell.
Thank you, counsel, for the opportunity to use this platform to recognize what I believe to be true heroes. One of the things that has been in my heart is leadership for our department. And I wanted to recognize publicly the heroism of some of the men and women on our department. And because of this, I came up with a leadership award. And this leadership award was based upon activity that occurred on May 31st. I'll move through this quickly because your time is valuable to me and make these presentations. On May 31st of 2020, the city of Michigan City experienced a gathering of over 1,000 people in front of the Michigan City Police Department to protest social injustice issues stemming from the death of George Floyd. A protest of this magnitude had never occurred in Michigan City, and the potential for violence and extensive property damage was high. Across the country, similar protests occurred, which resulted in officers and civilians sustaining various injuries, including death, along with substantial property damage. The protest in Michigan City ended with one assault of an officer and no injuries to civilians. Property damage was minimized to a truck and a few windows. This favorable outcome was a result of a unified and well-thought-out strategy, coupled with a community-centered approach and professionalism of the Michigan City Police Department. The assisting law enforcement agencies to include the Indiana State Police, the Port County Sheriff's Department, Trail Creek, Trail Creek Police Department, Long Beach Police Department, and the Michigan City Fire Department were critical to our success. Leadership is the driving force behind any successful organization. Tonight, I wanted to highlight and recognize members of the Michigan City Police Department who exemplified exceptional leadership during an unprecedented event. Their actions dramatically affected the outcomes of a day that we will never forget. The following members of the Michigan City Police Department are recognized tonight with the Chief's Award for Leadership Excellence. They are Lieutenant Tim Richardson, Lieutenant Ken Drake, Sergeant Jeff Petrowski, Corporal Mike King, Assistant Chief Jillian Ashley, and Assistant Chief Dave Cooney. At this time, I'd like to call forward Lieutenant Kim Drake. On May 31st of 2020, Lieutenant Ken Drake played a pivotal role in the success of the protest and displayed exceptional leadership throughout the seven-hour ordeal. He, along with Lieutenant Tim Richardson, oversaw crowd control and made numerous calls over the radio, which averted potentially violent situations by assisting the mobile direction of a highly-charged group. The decisions you made, your clear commands, were crucial in providing direction for our troops in every tense situation during the protest. Lieutenant Drake, you helped to shift the mentality of the crowd as they perceived our department was there to assist in a smooth-running protest rather than inflict violence or use of unnecessary force. Your leadership role was pivotal to the outcomes of the night. Lieutenant Drake, your efforts shall serve as a proud moment in your law enforcement career. Your actions were exceptional in service and are in keeping with the highest standards of the Michigan City Police Department. It is my honor to present you with the Chief's Award for Leadership Excellence. This time, I'd like to call forth Lieutenant Tim Richardson. On May 31st, 2020, Lieutenant Tim Richardson played a pivotal role in the success of the protest and displayed exceptional leadership throughout the seven-hour ordeal. He, along with Lieutenant Ken Drake, oversaw crowd control and made numerous calls over the radio, which averted potentially violent situations by assisting the mobile direction of a highly-charged group. These decisions caused the mentality of the crowd to shift as they perceived our department was there to assist in a smooth-running protest rather than inflict violence or use unnecessary force. As the evening progressed, a crowd of about 300 protesters mobilized in front of the Lighthouse Mall with the intentions of looting the property and damaging multiple businesses. Lieutenant Richardson was struck in the head with a large rock, yet maintained his composure and did not react. His self-restraint and decision to stay the course despite being assaulted was pivotal to the success of the protest. His personal injuries took a backseat to what was the best for the department and our city. Leadership was on full display. Lieutenant Richardson, your efforts shall serve as a proud moment in your law enforcement career. Your actions were exceptional in service and are in keeping with the highest standards of the Michigan City Police Department. Sir, it is my honor to present you with the Chief's Award for Leadership Excellence. Want to call Corporal Mike King up, please? On May 31st, 2020, towards the end of the protest, an agitated and aggressive crowd had gathered at the Lighthouse Mall. The group was determined to loot, damage property, and incite the police to act aggressively. As the night progressed, a large rock was thrown and struck Lieutenant Richardson in the head. SWAT team leader Corporal Mike King was given the green light to engage the crowd after the Michigan City Police Department experienced the onset of an attack and a contentious crowd that had crossed acceptable boundaries. Corporal King then made a critical determination. Instead of aggressive and justifiable acts, he commanded the troops to stand down, believing that we could get through this period without physical violence. His decision was correct. After 20 to 30 minutes of intense dialogue with the crowd, they eventually began to disperse, and a potential violent incident was averted. The actions of Corporal King were paramount to the success of the protest and helped to build community trust with the Michigan City Police Department. Corporal King, your efforts shall serve as a proud moment in your law enforcement career. Your actions were exceptional in service and are in keeping with the highest standards of the Michigan City Police Department. It is my honor to present you with the Chief's Award for Leadership Excellence. We're almost done, counsel. Sergeant Jeff Petrowski, please come forward. Honestly, I'm very, very proud of our department. If you were there and experienced what we experienced, it was just tremendous what happened that night. On May 31st, 2020, Sergeant Jeff Petrowski was the architect and primary strategist, along with Chief Cooney and Chief Ashley, in the staging, preparation, game plan, and safety procedures implemented during the protest. Your decision-making process and foresight were critical to the aversion of potential problems that we face. Sergeant Petrowski's foresight to create a barrier fence in the rear of the Michigan City Police Department may have stopped a substantial crowd from entering the department interior. After a demanding planning procedure, Sergeant Petrowski then led the SWAT team and kept them ready, get out of sight for six hours until they were needed towards the end of the protest. He stood by the chief of police throughout the protest and helped to give critical insight and direction at every stage during a long and grueling night. He dedicated himself over a stretch of more than 24 hours to ensure that the community had the best game plan in place with the available resources. His role was paramount in the success of everything that was accomplished that evening. Exceptional leadership was on full display. Sergeant Petrowski, your efforts shall serve as a proud moment in your law enforcement career. Your actions were exceptional in service and are in keeping with the highest standards of the Michigan City Police Department. It is my honor to present you with the Chief's Award for Leadership Excellence. I now call forth Assistant Chief Jillian Ashley. On May 31st, 2020, during the history of the Michigan City Police Department, administrative leadership had never experienced a protest which was estimated to have over 1,000 participants with such a high potential for violence and property damage. Assistant Chief Jillian Ashley played an integral role in the staging, preparation, game plan, and safety procedures implemented during the protest. Part of her responsibilities was monitoring the pulse of the community and ensuring that our approach and engagement displayed compassion and sensitivity to the prevailing issues without compromising safety. Assistant Chief Ashley, along with Assistant Chief Cooney, worked tirelessly over a 24-hour period prior to the protest. In addition to her pre-protest planning, Chief Ashley played a major role in advising the chief on split-second decisions throughout the protest. She was instrumental in engaging the crowd by speaking with multiple volatile protesters and diffusing potential conflicts. Assistant Chief Ashley was a major contributor to the success and the result of the historic protests in Michigan City. Assistant Chief Ashley, your efforts shall serve as a proud moment in your law enforcement career. Your actions were exceptional in service and are in keeping with the highest standards of the Michigan City Police Department. It is my honor to present you with the Chief's Award for Leadership Excellence. And last but not least, I'd like to call forth Assistant Chief Dave Cooney. On May 31st, 2020, Assistant Chief Dave Cooney played an integral role in the staging, preparation, game plan, and safety procedures implemented during the protest. Assistant Chief Cooney, along with Assistant Chief Ashley, worked tirelessly over a 24-hour period prior to the protest. His insight and background in SWAT were pivotal in determining the who, what, where, when, and why of the social injustice protests. Chief Cooney's leadership provided needed levels of trust among the troops and the assisting agencies who looked to him for direction in critical time. Chief Cooney ensured that our safety protocols were in place and that the department operated with a high level of restraint throughout the protest. The decision to place SWAT team members at the Lighthouse Mall averted major property damage and saved the city thousands of dollars. In the most critical waning hour, Chief Cooney's decision not to use force, but rather to engage in de-escalation procedures displayed high levels of leadership prowess. Assistant Chief Cooney, your efforts shall serve as a proud moment in your law enforcement career. And I also commend you that you also participated in the Laporte protest and helped with them after you had gone a long stretch, which just shows your dedication to the law enforcement community. Your actions were exceptional in service and are in keeping with the highest standards of the Michigan City Police Department. It is my honor to present you with the Chief's Award for Leadership Excellence. Counsel, I appreciate your time. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to recognize the heroes on our department. I will say that you're in good hands. We are not a perfect department, but we're pushing towards excellence every day to bring you a department that you can be proud of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. A couple of us have some things to say. One thing I did want to say, I wanted to commend Chief Campbell himself for the tone and the culture of leadership that you've set, because I'm sure with your leadership style, it's what led these officers to react the way they did without just meeting force and escalating the situation. So I also want to commend you. I think we owe all these officers a standing ovation. Councilman Simmons.
Yes, I would just like to commend all the recipients and encourage them to keep up the good work. And Chief, great job.
Councilman Preswellinsky.
I too want to thank the heroes here tonight. And I believe that Chief Campbell, even though he doesn't want to decorate himself, needs a high grade of accolade, because I watched that situation being streamed to me live. And we had talked already about that incident. And all you gentlemen are heroes for being abused and disrespected. You showed a high caliber of selflessness to the community. And I want to thank you.
Councilman Mendage and Councilman Preswellinsky.
Just to echo that, and I just want to say that, again, Chief Campbell, you know, I've watched Chief Campbell grow as a leader in this community. And it shows by his team and the people that he, that have been commanded here tonight. And I just want to say that I appreciate what the police department did on that evening in keeping the peace and making sure that everybody was safe. I mean, it was live, people were watching, they got up to 25,000 viewers that night that were watching what was happening. And I believe that without the police department being out there and showing their leadership and their restraint, that things could have gone bad really fast. And I appreciate each and every one that was out there. Kudos to everybody that was commanded here tonight. But again, I think the leadership is showing, and I see the growth in all of the department. I think it's important that we continue to do this, especially as we're looking to, you know, bring on new officers here in the future. I think they need to see that we are an exceptional department, and Michigan City is a good place to be and work. So I appreciate everything that you are doing and setting that standard for the department too as well. Thank you.
President Lewis.
Yeah, to all the award recipients, I want to thank each and every one of you for all the diligence, courage, and protection that you provided in Michigan City that day and that evening. I took part, my son took part, in that protest, march, whatever you want to call it. And it was very peaceful. There was a meaning to it, and I think the meaning got across. And I know that I went up after I got done with the walk and thanked Police Chief Campbell for everything that was going on that afternoon and how peaceful it was. And I just wanted to thank each and every one of you for the great job you did that day. And I know you're all dedicated, and I know many of you up there. And Chief Campbell, I think you deserve one of those awards also. You know, give yourself a Chief's Award, and I'd be more than happy to come up to the ceremony. But you certainly, you deserve it. I think you're doing a great job as a chief. And I know that these officers received the Chief's Award, but I know there were many other officers that were involved that day, and many other police departments that were involved that day. And I just want to thank them from the city of Michigan City, from the Michigan City City Council, and from me personally for doing a great job that day, because it was a team effort, and everybody had to work together to make it peaceful. You did a fantastic job. Thank you very much.
Councilman Matt.
Just a brief thank you. Also, the issues of unrest are national, and we were a shining example in the nation of how communities of different backgrounds and different socioeconomic statuses in difficult times can actually utilize thinking thoughtful strategic professionals to come to peaceful solutions as much as possible. So I'm just so proud of you guys. We can be the example of Northwest Indiana and the country of how this stuff is actually done. Thank you.
Councilman Dabney.
Quick comment. I'm going to just concur with all of the comments that were made by the previous council members and just say thank you. I almost want to tell a story with Officer, Chief Campbell coming over to one of my neighborhood associations, but I'll save that for a later day. He didn't want any accolades. He was ready to run out of there when I started to talk about him. So I'm going to let him off the hook tonight, but I'm sure I'll see you again here. Thank you all.
Councilwoman Tillman.
And again, I think that all the council members pretty much spoke and said what I would like to convey to every one of you. I actually was able to observe the march from my residence right on Michigan Boulevard and to see the officers assist, not just as in controlling the crowd, but they participated in the march. And that showed a lot of gratitude and appreciation to understand that this wasn't just a whim. It was a cause that not just affected George Floyd in regards to his passing, but it could have happened here at home, and it didn't. And I pray every day, because I am a mother of two African-American males, to where something like this could have transpired here in Michigan City. But based off of the officers and those that participated in this, I would like to think and to say that we have anything like that to worry about, as long as we continue to see the growth and the leadership that is given from our local administration for that.
Councilwoman Jigus.
I don't want to repeat what everyone else has said. I agree with all of that, and you are excellent role models for all police departments in the area. So I commend you. Thank you very much.
Let's give them another hand since we put around the room with that. Okay. Moving on, Land's House Economic Development Corporation, to present Michigan City Economic Development Corporation made your report, and I think we all were handed a vote.
Good evening, Council President and Council. That's a hard act to follow, but I must say, you know, I am biased, so I am thankful we have a great police department, because whatever they do affects what I do. And having them doing a great job makes your community a community that people want to come to, spend money, and invest. So that's definitely thankful for what they're doing, because what they do affects our economic growth in our community. Land's House, Michigan City Economic Development Corporation, I'm here tonight to give you a quick overview of the last six or seven months of activity in in the marketplace. And I won't take too long because I gave you a full packet. So I'm going to ask you that after you have a chance to review it, please feel free to call me. We can visit at my office and we can go forward through it line by line if you need to. But I just want to give you some highlights tonight, read away what's happening within the marketplace. In your packet, the cover is actually a analysis of us are doing business in Michigan City versus Illinois. So you'll be shocked at the taxes across the state line, but we use this a lot to compare business costs between the two states, of course, Michigan City. Towards the back of your packet will have a market profile. We give that to a lot of people who do marketing and sales who travel across the country. They want to talk about La Porte County, Michigan City. They kind of have a similar story so we can market or sell. And then going back to the first part of the packet, the white pages, I want to kind of, we give you a quick summary of what's happening within our community. 2020 has been a very interesting year. Nothing that we could have expected in terms of what has happened over the past seven, eight months. You know, we began the year with a bang. We had our first company moved in, JB West, 250 construction jobs over the next four years. And that was in January, February. And then from there, things began to change. So, but they bought a 20,000 square foot building over the, I would 212, six or seven acres. And the goal is to expand and keep building a large company in an arena. The reason for, one of the reasons for, for the expansion into Michigan City was they're trying to work into the southwest central Michigan market, northeast Indiana. And so we are in the perfect location. And they're growing pretty fast. You have not seen lately, there's a lot of JB West truck and personnel all over town. They're working in Michigan, South Bend, Northwest Indiana. So they're growing pretty fast. We also, in terms of the, the economic trends, I mean, this year has been devastating somewhat economically and it's still lingering. The effects of COVID-19 pandemic will be felt for a long time. We have a health issue unless we get resolved, it will keep you really hurt economically as a, as a country. So we are no different than any other country, any, any other city in the, in the United States. We are facing huge retail failures or restaurants and other commercial businesses really can't open the way they're supposed to. We've had layoffs, we've had pro loads from a lot of manufacturers. And so even though there are jobs being created, we're having a tough time getting people back to work because of all the health and safety procedures. So that's going to be a big issue for us moving forward as a country and of course Michigan City. We are mirroring exactly what's happening across the country. So we are no different in that respect. On the first page, we've had nine new or expanding business in Michigan City in the past eight months, projecting over 446 new jobs for the next three or four years and estimated $33 million in capital investment. Going down to our lead generation, we get a lot of leads from the state, but if you look on the second or third or fourth down the line, we get a lot of direct calls, a lot of referrals. Those are people we were talking to in the marketplace, both Indiana, Michigan, Illinois, Ohio. Lots of people are calling us, wanting to know what's going on in Michigan City. So, and then of course, investment development, we just kind of mentioned so many people who have opened up the past six months, even during COVID, people are still opening business, which is a great thing for us. So we've got the Barrel House, Bozak Handa, Bricks, some, been the commercial, the, if anybody has driven out later to the Wood of Business Park, the GAF Building is pretty much all the way up. They're pouring almost 15 acres of concrete, which is the most I've ever seen. I drove back there one day, there were 25 trucks with concrete lined up to get poured. So huge project for us in Michigan City. The condo project is still moving along slowly. We're probably looking right now about $200 million worth of projects in the downtown in the next few years in terms of condos, apartments, townhomes, all being looked at and working closely with the RDC to bring those projects to fruition. Currently, we can't say a lot about them, but we are meeting with investors, developers. This year alone, we've had seven come to town. And of course, that has changed where we do business, lots of Zoom, lots of emails, lots of phone calls. And when they come to town, they're riding in a car in the back and I call them with my cell phone and they, I talk to them with their cell phone and we drive around town. So it's a different way of doing business, but we're trying to make sure we still do business under these different conditions. We've had four companies visit our community, look at buildings. And so we foresee a lot of growth in the near future. It's interesting in the economy that retail and commercial are really hurting, but in the, an office sector is really hurting, but in the industrial sector, they're still building. And that's a good sign because that means they're preparing for the future. We completed an extension process earlier this year, over 425 acres. And so we're working with the city's water and sewer department to explore funding for utilities and in their future. Tonight, you, you guys will be working on rezoning that, some of those parcels for industrial development. And so the whole process is part of to rezone for future business park potential, but also expanding a TIF in that general area. On the second page, I gave you a quick snapshot of some of the companies and what they invested in the past eight months. Mentioned JB West, Pace, that's a $20 million expansion at the old Presbyterian healthcare facility. That's a lot of medical related jobs in senior services. And then of course, you guys were grateful enough to approve Aquagenics and Pediclast last, last two weeks. Those are moving along as we speak. To the third page, we were talking about some of our partners and some of the stuff we've done the past year. We had a lot of Zoom meetings. We did a lot of Zoom training the past year. People are still inquiring about how to get loans, how to do business. So we're doing a lot of Zoom type training. We're working with a small group looking at some of the city food deserts and figure out how to resolve that issue. We don't have an answer yet to that issue, but we know if we keep talking, we'll figure it out. We're looking at probably over an hour coming up next week about how to resolve some of those issues. So we've got, we're working with a lot of different partners and which is great. One of the projects that's being funded right now by the RDC is exploring what a coworking space technology center could look like in the near future. And so we're working to figure what, how we can get funding from the government, federal government to make that happen. The EDC, of course, get funding from the city, the casino, but we also raise private sector dollars. So we're currently trying to raise money for the next three years. And so we are almost there, 70%. So we keep popping on doors and trying to make that happen. One of the things we were supposed to do this year was the awards banquet. That didn't happen. We're going to shoot for next year and hopefully we can all be there. Earlier this year in March, we had 12 international delegates come on to our city from eight countries. And that was a big deal for us to spend the day showing them what this is all about, our parks, our beach, our microbrewery. And they had a great time here in our, in our community. We're hoping that will not only bring people from other countries here to visit, but also to buy a home and also invest in a, in a company here at some point. So that's part of our marketing outreach to bring investors into our community. One of our current large projects is a partnership working with the city of La Porte, La Porte County and using the foundation to do a housing demand study. That's one of the hottest topics right now is housing in all of La Porte County. And we think we're in the best location for housing. We have a lot of water and sewer lines toward the whole city. We have a lot of, we have identified a number of large parcels in the city, 40 acres here, 20 acres here. And so we want to make sure when the study is complete in the next six months, we are ready to attract, I call it, market rate workforce, middle class housing. You know, we never have to worry about the beach, those settle all day long, but we're trying to find homes between 200,000 and 300,000 for people who want to move up or, you know, improve in the housing. On the next page is our strategic plan and some of the things we've done over the past 12 months to keep working on our plan. Of course, one of the big issue for us is the whole COVID-19 issue. When that was announced in March, we started to meet with some of the CEOs in the city. And so we, we had biweekly meetings, now it's once a month, but just to share information and how to collaborate, coordinate with a lot of the nonprofits, United Way, Salvation Army, we had the hospital, banks, then the mayor. But just to talk on a couple of council members who, who were on the call, just to talk about how to, how to get the city back, but also how to share information so we're not duplicating efforts in the community. So we're doing it now still once a month and trying to make sure that we can move forward and get the city back on track. I mean, everybody's hurting. I know you guys have struggled with some issues with parks and housing and all that. So believe in me, everybody's trying to figure a way how to get past what's going on with COVID-19. One of our biggest issues coming up right now, and I'm hoping we can move forward, you know, when everything gets cleared up is just, we need to get more buildings built in our community. We've had 19 requests for large buildings in the past eight months. And I put in the back of your packet what a, what we call a lead, what it looks like. When somebody shoots me an email, that's what I get. And they tell me what they're looking for, how many square foot, they want aerial maps, they want floodplain maps, they want to know the water pipe size, they want to know electrical service, natural gas service, wastewater sprinkler systems, compressed gas, compressed air. And so, you know, we trying to find that information on the building before we send out to the client. But I, these are probably all within the last month of, well, September. And you're saying they want, the people are looking for 100,000 to 500,000 square feet, 24 foot ceiling height, they want some outside storage. This one wants 7,000 square feet, 40 foot ceiling. But so those are, this is, these are actual live leads that came in within the last 30 days that we can respond because we don't have a building. And so I'm hoping tonight that you guys will look trouble on the rezoning because that's 300 acres that we can start looking to get developers to build buildings in our city to invest in capital investment for new buildings, new, new equipment and hopefully new jobs and advanced manufacturing. That's, I want to stay right there, I guess, because I don't want to get too much. You guys have a big agenda. I keep putting your packet of our plan for the next five years. So again, any questions you may have, please call me. I've also outlined in your package some of the things we've done, we did during COVID, lots of information sharing to the business community. We work closely with the Chamber of Commerce, the La Porte County Visuals Bureau to really get information to the, to the business community. We had a business survey on what some of the issues were in Michigan City. We shared with the business community, the banks. The whole idea is to keep the business sector moving forward because we don't know how long this is going to be. I mean, in my career, I've worked with hurricanes, tornadoes, even a riot. And there's always a start and an end. This is the only one I've worked where there's a start and there is no end in sight. And so that's very, very different because you're in the middle of doing triage and you're still having patients falling. And so that's been a very different experience for me. I'm going to open up the questions and so I don't keep you guys here too long.
Thank you, Mr. Holes. Counselman President Wieski.
Yeah, Mr. Holes, I have a question about with St. Anthony Hospital and the Midtown area, is the city working at all with the St. Anthony Hospital Administration as far as bringing developers in? We speak of housing, we speak of affordable housing, we speak of neighborhood development, development, and that there is right prime property in the middle of Michigan City. And I would, I would hope that the city of Michigan City is going to be working with the hospital to bring a housing development, you know, 150, $200,000 houses that you could put in that neighborhood. Because believe it or not, myself and my, and Councilman Paul Prezdelinski, we, we grew up right across the street from St. Anthony Hospital. We saw what happened to the neighborhoods that were there. They were all bought out and parking lots were made. And now is the opportunity that the houses can go back in and the neighborhoods, you know, another neighborhood can be developed and the Midtown area can be developed and property values can rise and tax income, property tax income can come. So I don't know if the city's doing it now, but I hope that they will reach out to St. Anthony to say, hey, we'd like to be a partner in this and develop this neighborhood. Thank you.
Just a quick note, yes, the mayor has spoken to the CEO and the city planners here, we have spoken to them. I don't know what they want to see happen on their site. They're talking to a number of investors right now, that they're about to demolish two thirds of the complex. They're looking at probably senior homes and homes for adults with disabilities. Currently, we don't have places for people who are disabled or adults to live. And so they're hoping to have that house there on site too. So, but there's, they've come to us, they're in the city to talk about what can happen there. So again, it's their property, so we're hoping we can help them with those ideas like you just mentioned. Another, another thing you just brought up too is the cost of a house. Talking to a number of contractors and developers who build houses, they're telling me that the cost of materials and labor, they can't build a house for under 200,000. So if you want to build a house for under 200,000, you're going to have to look at getting federal dollars to make it, to make them affordable. So just, I guess, as a conversation piece, but having spoken to a number of contractors, they're telling me it's impossible.
Yeah, it was just a concept that I threw out there, 150 to 200.
It can't be done with federal.
Whatever it is, there would have to be a plan put in place to begin with anyway. So I just, I just want to see the city work with them to make sure that we get something viable, both for them and for the city and develop that neighborhood and that part of town.
A great location, five blocks from the train station.
I have to echo the concerns of Don, Councilman Don Prezdelinski and the neighborhood and the people in the neighborhood have asked many, many times that, so I guess I'll have to, I'll say this publicly, that to confer, convey to you, and the mayor's not here tonight, I don't think, is that a lot of neighbors were very concerned with what the hospital is going to do or what they might do. And one thing that they were totally opposed of is any kind of campus for homeless people. So with that being said, I know there's a, we have issues in town with housing, though the city planner is here tonight, though we'll go in a different direction. I know this has nothing to do with you, Clarence, is that I think with some legislation that's sitting in front of us, that we need to look at stop tearing down homes and start rehabbing them in our community for housing and affordable housing. Now, that's just, that's just a statement, but I think it's doable with the, with the community we live in and all the homes that are torn down every year. And, and to me, like my brother Don talked about, seeing what happened in that neighborhood with all the homes that were bought up, which that was their right and, and they did what they, they wanted to do. But, you know, it took almost 20 years, 20 years of harping for them to complete a master plan for that campus with me and my father harping about it. 20 years, the planning department couldn't get them to fulfill a master plan to let the neighborhood know what they're doing. So I don't want to get off on that too much. But Clarence, let me ask you this. With all the requests that you have had on buildings and industrial buildings, you know, like to have cranes and things of this nature, has there been any discussion with the planning department to build some of these, to look at your demands that are inquiries that you've had and build some of these places in these TIF district to try to market them like they did at the Ameriplex in Portage? Is, is that?
We, we have. One of the issue is the TIF, the newly created TIF doesn't have the funds yet to do what you're, you're asking. But again, how But again, having large traxel land is helpful. And tonight, you can help us do that by rezoning that property on Highway 20. It's a sweet spot. It's within a mile of the interstate. It's on a heavy haul road. You can do 120,000 pounds on a truck without a permit on Highway 20. And so you can get it to Detroit in four hours, Indian two and a half, Chicago in an hour. It's the right spot for a large project. And so getting that piece of property rezoned industrial is going to be key for us the next five years in getting large projects in the city. So you're on the right track. And we have talked about that.
Okay.
Having land is key.
All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Giegus.
Yes, I'd like to commend the EDCMC for this lovely report. I mean, I just like the way the statistics just jump out at you. And unfortunately, a lot of it's compared to Illinois, but I think, you know, that's where we have to get our businesses from. So it looks like a very positive business climate here. So I, your report, I think is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Simmons.
I also would like to commend you, Clarence, on the great job you're doing. I'm excited, of course, in six ward. JB West is in my ward, AG, uh, GAL. And this rezoning, I'm just excited about that. And the great thing about all of this is you continue to move the needle with COVID being overpriced. Thank.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Mack.
Also, just to co-sign on this presentation, this pamphlet is great. I'm going to digest all of this a little later. It's outstanding. I just want to also thank you for acquiring that funding for the Enterprise Center or a version of it. We've talked about that and I'm sure you've talked about it with other councilmen. There's many models that exist for that, but, you know, in my vision, here in Michigan City, having some type of aggressive program to develop entrepreneurship and ownership models and mentality is just something that we really could benefit from. I just believe, like I've said a million times to you, training and people development is the only way forward in the United States right now. And so, and you're very high on that. So I'm looking forward to working with you, especially in that area. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments or questions?
Just so you guys know, we're restarting our tour for committees next year because COVID is going to pause a lot of stuff for us. But we have a housing task force and a workforce development task force. And part of the workforce task force is, you know, we got roughly 400 jobs to be created in the next three years. How do we make sure we have people who are trained to get those jobs? I've got companies paying 20 bucks an hour starting pay and finding people. So I need to figure out with Work One, MCAS, Hydratech, and state funds, how do we get people in the pipeline? So when these companies do start hiring, our local residents are first to get those jobs. And so you got to step back and look, okay, what are the skill sets they need and start doing those kind of things moving forward. The housing task force, we have the housing demand started being done right now on a countywide level. When that's released, my goal is to go to Indy, Illinois, Michigan to find housing developers. We can do, you know, market rate houses for a community, for affordable homes, whether they're duplex or single family for the community, the kids. We got some great locations here in the city. We just don't have the homes. And people are coming here and want to live here. Right now in Michigan City, if you get a great house in a great neighborhood, you're getting four or five offers right now. So that's a good sign for us. So people want to be here in our community. Before I end tonight, I want to introduce a new member of my team. He's two weeks new, so his name is Jalen Bowley. He is our new business manager. And so I just want to welcome him to Michigan City and you'll get to meet him in the future. He is new to the team. He's a master's grad from University of Southern Mississippi in economic development. So we hope to bring him in here and hopefully he'll make this his home for a long time. So Jalen, welcome. You want to say anything for this council?
Thank you, Mr. Hulse, and welcome, Jalen. Look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, petitions. Mike.
Petition P. 101-20 for rezoning, R. 1B and B. 3 to M. 2, Homestead Company LLC, Green Acres LLC, Pioneer Lumber, Inc., approximately 293 acres, parcel between Menke Road, I-94, Highway 2035, Michigan City, Indiana.
Communications.
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on October 7, 2020 from Mr. Ed Shin, Park and Superintendent regarding the proposed reopening plan for Washington Park. Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on October 7, 2020 from Yvonne Hoff, Master City Control, regarding fraudulent incident within the city. Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on October 7, 2020 from Joan Ganshaw, regarding social status of African-American male. And she asked that I please read this for the record. Dear Mayor Perry and Mr. Sean Fitzpatrick, the Indiana Commission on the Social Status of Black Males gladly supports the Michigan City Commission on the Social Status of African-American Males and service the commission provides to the community. The Michigan City Commission has been out exploratively, local commissions in the state of Indiana, and proudly supports and attends events initiatives to state level. The Indiana Commission on Social Status of Black Males continues to address the challenges confronting black males while trying to aid in decreasing the problems they face in the areas of criminal justice, education, employment, health, and social factors. Cannot do this work without the support and assistance of local commission like Michigan City. ICSSBM is proud of the past work with the Michigan City Commission and look forward to continuing our partnership to serve as assisted black males. State Commission stands ready to assist you in Michigan City in the way possible. ICSSBM is committed to supporting the local commission and will work and participate in the Planning Process Commission participation or through events and in activities. And sincerely, James Garrett, Executive Director of the Indiana Commission of Social Status of Black Males. Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on October 8, 2020 from Mayor Duane Perry regarding the common council appointment to the Michigan City Social Status of African-American Male. Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on October 13, 2020 from Councilman Michael Mack regarding the 27th versus 26 week of pay for salaried employees. Correspondence was also received or was sent to Mr. Roddy McCormick on October 14, 2020 from Council President Sean Fitzpatrick and Councilwoman Tillman regarding his appointment to the MCSSAAM.
Thank you, Ms. Nala. Our first resolution.
Mr. President. Point of order, are we supposed to have on this petition, are we supposed to have a vote on that before we move forward on the rezoning?
That's not, yeah.
No.
No, you will be voting on an ordinance.
Okay, I'm sorry.
For that purpose later.
Our first resolution by title only.
A resolution by title only approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of First Amendment to the Equipment Lease Purchase Agreement with Bank of America Public Capital Corporation. And this is introduced by Mr. Fitzpatrick and Mr. Don Presvalinsky.
This was, this was a refinance for the ESG. So this was just an attempt to get a better rate for what we already had out for the ESG program. Is there anything you wanted to add, Councilman Presvalinsky?
Yeah, what this deal is with is in 2018 is when we signed the ESG contract whereby we were saving, it's Energy Savings Group and Energy Savings Program. And we signed a 10-year contract with, with the Bank of, I think it was America. Anyway, Attorney Myers put the cover sheet together here after him and I had conversations yesterday, just so we get all the detailed information. And basically, in the first paragraph, you can see there were two leases used to finance the project. And I'm halfway into the first paragraph. One is for $3,200,000 with an interest rate of 3.413 per annum and one for $1 million with an interest rate of 3.213 per annum. So the new interest rate on both of them is going to go down to 1.8%. So overall, the first lease, which was the original amount of principal and interest the city had to pay over a period of 10 years, was $3,841,405.90. So the city's already made one payment on that amount in January 2020, which it will, in the amount of $384,140.59. Anyway, after the refinancing, the city will have to pay an additional total of $3,111,756.73 for a total of $3,695,897.32. Subtracting that amount from the original amount provides a savings of $145,508.58 over the remaining nine years of financing. So that's for the first lease. And we have two leases here. And the second lease basically is explained that the original amount of the principal and the interest the city had to pay over a period of 10 years was going to be $1,237,211.10. City's already made one payment on that amount in January 2020 in the amount of $123,702.11. And after the refinancing, the city will have to pay an additional $1,074,641 for a total of $1,198,543.96. Subtracting that amount from the original amount provides a savings of $38,677.14 over the remaining nine years of that finance. Thus, total savings for both refinanced leases over the nine years of the financing is going to be $184,185.72. And that's the basis of these two resolutions, with all the repayment schedules and everything that, that are included in the packet.
Is there any comment from the public on this resolution? Any comments from the public on this resolution? Any council comment? Councilwoman Giegus.
I just have a question for the second lease. Is it also for ESG or is it for something else?
Yeah, they're both.
They're both, they're both for ESG.
Yeah.
Yeah, there were, there were two parts to the project.
Any other council comments? Any other council comments?
I move for adoption.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt from Councilwoman Dyson, second by Councilwoman Tillman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Resolution passed. Ms. Nala, our second resolution by title only objection.
A resolution by title only approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of the Second Amendment to the Equipment Lease Purchase Agreement with Bank of America Public Capital Corporation. And this is also introduced by Mr. Fitzpatrick and Mr. Don Presvalinsky.
And this is the second part, which Council Presvalinsky already explained and gave the numbers for. I don't know if you have anything else to add at this time.
No, I don't have anything to add.
Any comments from the public on this resolution? Any comments from the public on this resolution? Any council comment?
Motion to approve.
Support.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Presvalinsky and second by, I didn't catch that one. Was it Councilman Dabney? Second by Councilman Dabney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Resolution passes. Ms. Nala, our first ordinance on first reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on first reading by title only amending the zoning map of the city of Michigan City, La Porte County, Indiana, to rezone property owned by Homestead Company LLC, Green Acres LLC, and Pioneer Lumber, Inc., from R. 1B and B. 3 to M. 2. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Mr. Simmons.
Does the author have any comments at this time?
Yes. The Plan Commission at their September 22, 2020 meeting voted unanimously to favorably recommend the rezoning of this property, 293 acres for a heavy industrial district, which will be consistent with the Michigan City Comprehensive Plan. And this is the other piece that Mr. Hulse was referring to earlier.
Thank you, Councilman. Does he have anything to add at this time? Any comments from the public on this ordinance? Please, I should name and address for the record, please.
There we go. My name's Barry McDonald. I'm an attorney in Michigan City with offices at Cicca 1 Franklin Street. And I am here this evening representing Homestead Company, Green Acres, and Pioneer Lumber. And thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the council, for entertaining this ordinance. Mr. Hulse has kind of taken some of the thunder away from our presentation, but in a good way, I think, because obviously we timed this introduction of the ordinance, I think, pretty well on the heels of his report. Again, this is a petition to rezone approximately 293 acres on the east side of Michigan City. It's currently a mix of both residential and commercial zoning. We'd ask that it be rezoned to M. 2 to allow for further industrial and manufacturing growth. And with me tonight are representatives of the companies. Back in the back row, we've got Don McDonald, different spelling than mine, who along with his brother Pat are the principals of Homestead Company. We also have Mr. Steve Radke, who's the principal in Green Acres and Pioneer Lumber. They're obviously here. Council had any questions? In addition to Clarence, we've got Mr. Roy Rolkey, who is a commercial broker with Cressy. And Roy may speak after I, we won't make Clarence speak again, and we will be brief because I know you've got a lot after us on the agenda, but Mr. Rolkey can add some color because he's actually boot on the ground, bringing people, bringing manufacturing facilities and employers to the site and can speak about what they're looking for specifically and why this rezoning is so important. So this is really the next step in a process that's been going on for a long, long time, even before my involvement. But just to give you kind of the summary of how we got here, in late 2017, the council and the administration at the time signed a pre-annexation agreement with my clients. Essentially, the pre-annexation agreement committed my clients to voluntarily annexing the property and committed the city to favorably looking upon this rezoning and anticipating this rezoning. And secondarily, to commit to bring city services to the site within three years of the annexation becoming effect, essentially sewer and water. That was late 2017. Late 2018, the council approved the annexation. The annexation, again, was 426 acres. The annexation did not become effective. Mr. Myers and I can bore you to tears about why, but it basically did not become effective even though it was approved in late 18 until early, effectively, January of 2020. So this year, we actually, the 426 acres became a part of Michigan City. And their existing zoning carried with them. So the zoning they had in the county carried with them. So late, I'm sorry, September of this year, the Plan Commission unanimously approved a recommendation to the council supporting this rezoning. And that brings us here this evening. And before I turn it over to anybody else that may want to speak, just a point of clarification, I think it's, we've talked about it before, but the annexation was 426 acres. The rezoning request is only approximately 293 acres. And that's really for a couple of reasons. Number one, some of the property just didn't need to be rezoned. A good example would be the big chunk of Swan Lake Cemetery. obviously, that was part of La Porte County, that's now a part of Michigan City appropriately, doesn't need to be rezoned. And secondarily, Olmstead Company is kind of keeping out of this industrial rezoning the property furthest to the east on the other side of the creek, and it's going to be kind of set aside for future residential development. It's already zoned resident. But again, in addition to industrial land, the second great need that we have in this city is obviously big parcels for potential residential development. But that's why the rezoning is a smaller parcel than the annexation. So, that's kind of it for me. Um, I'll maybe ask Mr. Rolkey to come and just give you a couple of minutes, because he can give you real-life examples of why this is so important for the city of Michigan City. And with that, I just thank you for your time and thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Were there any council questions for Mr. McDonald?
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Roy Rolkey. I'm a resident of South Bend, but have a lot of projects and a lot of activity in the Michigan City area. And I've been the real estate broker for the McDonald property along with some other manufacturing properties in Michigan City for quite some time. It's important to realize the value that is already at this site for people that are looking to locate a transportation like Jim Berg Logistics, the new logistics company down by the Hyundai dealership, transportation, distribution, logistics, warehousing, and manufacturing. They look for closeness to a major highway, a north-south highway, east-west highway. The heavy haul route is quite valuable. They can bring in two loads what a normal we would do. And transportation is the largest cost for most manufact, not cost of goods or labor, it's the transportation of the goods in and out. That's a very good point. And Michigan City right now is also getting back to being one of the top two or three places in the United States within about a 40-mile radius, where you can reach the largest amount of North American population by team or individual driven. I have noticed a tremendous increase in activity calls and legitimate calls about the site in the last three years and a real uptick in the past year. There's been six major showings at the site. Only one of them has been what you would call a heavy manufacturer, a national, basically international, heavy-duty snowplow manufacturer. Everybody else has been transportation, distribution, logistics, very similar to the project our company did in 2011, the Family Dollar Warehouse over in Ashby, Indiana. 350 jobs, 45 manager jobs, starting wage of 18 an hour. Those type of people looking. And surprisingly, the site has had a lot of food-grade requests. Three food-grade companies. And those, anytime you hear food grade or cold storage, they're tremendous investments in communities. They're very expensive buildings to use, to build. Rarely do they move out of the facilities because of the expense of building them. They kept very well, good paying. And of course, the rail's a real asset, too. South Shore Freight serves all the major rail lines in Chicago. Somebody needs rail access, which is a third of the cost of truck, they can have that there. So, it's got all these advantages, but what it doesn't have is it doesn't have water and sewer right now, and it doesn't have the TIF. And don't think that's important. Years ago, when Harley-Davidson was looking for a national facility between York, Pennsylvania, and Milwaukee, everybody in their right mind thought it was going to Howe, Indiana, by the toll at the Howe River Crossing. They did not have a good entrance. They did not have enough water and sewer at the site. They just weren't ready for it. They never even made the shortlist for the facility, even though it made sense on a mileage basis and everything for where their facilities were to place it in Howe. I use the analogy before I finish of, of you've got to have a helmet and you've got to have shoulder pads to go play a college football game. You're getting close, but you need to have the water and sewer, and let me tell you why. Too many economic development officials like Clarence and companies have been burdened by communities that commit, people say they're going to come to a community, they get a commitment, and it takes them too long to get the city water and sewer put in. Because once a company decides they want to come to an area, a national company, a regional company, they want their permits and everything done in 90 to 120 days, and they want to be turning dirt in 120 to 150 days. So, they want to see that you've already begun the process or already have the water and sewer and that your TIF is in place. So, I applaud the board for going through this process. When I spoke at the last meeting, I said this is great, because recently, we had a major manufacturer wanting to do a large regional baking operation there at the facility. And when we asked them, "When do you want to be ready to go?" They'd like to be operational by the end of the third quarter next year if they choose this site. That means they want to be done and operating it up by September. So, you know, these people want to move, so I applaud your effort. And any questions you might have about the type of businesses that are looking at the facility or anything else, I'll gladly answer them and get in touch with me through Clarence. I would like to add one side story about the hospital. Our company, Cressy, did the hospitals in Mishawaka, including the old Sancho Hospital, which is very similar to your hospital there. I did not work on the project, but people near me in our office did. And ultimately, in the end, it was developed into a mental health organization, bought and will be used for that, along with assisted living. There's a lot of federal government money right now out for assisted living, not as much as for nursing homes. So, that's what, what that hospital is being turned into. Working-class neighborhood on one side, city of Mishawaka's downtown district on the other side. And that was a tremendous amount of time and effort into that. Hospitals are hard to rehab because of the way they're built into homes, condominiums, or other things, like some of the older industrial buildings, on a, on a side note. So, feel free to contact at our office, and they can tell you the case history and how that developed for the hospital. But back to the McDonald site, people want to see, and, and the Pioneer site, they want to see that the city water, water and sewer are going to be coming in. They want to see the TIF, if, if TIF district is in place. And it's all very helpful, the great economic development pillar. Frankly, you have to give Clarence and the city the opportunity to work. Any questions?
Are there any questions for?
I don't have any questions. I appreciate the presentation and the comments about the hospital. I was wondering if I could ask for first and second reading, I mean, second and third reading tonight to move this along, expedite it. Because it's not a money transfer. We, they already had a formal public hearing on September 22.
This, I will add in the request for the additional readings tonight. I'm, I understand the process of normal three separate readings. This site, and I cannot disclose it, is right now has been shortlisted for three different companies. That means when they start out anywhere from 12 to 24 companies in their national search, they're down to the shortlist. Is that a guarantee that they're going to locate at the site? No, I do not know that, and that would be wrong to say that. But if they do go from the shortlist to being chosen, the sooner all of this can get, process can be done with correct due diligence, the better.
Okay. I did have one question for our city planner, Mr. York. Can you, for, for the record, for the record and for the council and the public, can you explain the differences in the zone classifications?
Okay. So, when this came in, excuse me. When this came in, it carried over the county zoning. The B3 zoning is a commercial class, which is currently what it is right now. You see that B3, the B3 is a commercial class. It's a typical general commercial is what it's called, lots of uses in it. It would be similar to what you would find down 421, further, let's say, past Cool Spring. That's more general commercial. We don't have a B, we don't really have, I can't think of any B3. There might be a little bit in the city, but typically, that's a county commercial zoning. And then the R1B is a large lot residential. So, it's like, um, um, let's see, more than an acre, two acres. It's, it's made for large lots. The lots are specifically, when they're subdivided, would be a larger lot with a house, more agricultural or stepping down from agricultural, if you will. And then the M3, M2, that's our heavy industrial zoning. Heavy industrial has changed over the years. It's not the smokestacks that you see or you imagine in the past. It really has changed more to what Mr. Rolkey was, Rolkey was explaining. We're looking at more, um, um, food processing, food, food processing, food-grade industrial, or even light industrial is allowed in there, is allowed in there as well. So, it's not just heavy, it could be something lighter, like an M1 classification. I can't really give you, there's lots of different degrees of, 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 of industrial zoning in there. It also includes warehousing, shipping, and receiving. So, you could see something similar to Mr. Burke trucking going in there. It's more logistics of, of shipping and receiving, parking trucks, and then picking them up, putting them back on the heavy haul route. Is that?
Okay.
Clarify that?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. And might, might I add that, that with regard to sewer and water, we are working with, we've been working with the Clarence Hulse and EDC currently. We've been working with, coordinating with the water department and the sewer department. This is just the first step. The rezoning is the first step in kind of for us to look at grants and writing grants to achieve that, so that maybe we can take some of the burden off of the city. So, this is the first step in doing that, okay?
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Preswellensky, Councilman?
I have a question for the city planner. In that TIF district out there, is there, is there enough money to run water and sewer out there right now?
No, there's not, um, there's not a TIF district on top of this annexed area yet.
There's not a TIF?
Not yet. But the intention is to, I'm sorry.
Why not?
It, it was not done at the same time.
Is it that far out of the TIF district?
It is right next door to it.
It's right next door.
So, what we intend on doing, just for, just to take it further, we have to declare it an, an economic development area, and then we could, we are allowed to TIF it at that point in time. We have to make our TIF declaration, I believe, in March of next year. And then that will come to you before this council, and then that will allow us to move forward with the, with the appropriate TIF in place. Now, keep in mind that just because we put the TIF in place, we have to have development in that area to make the TIF, the increment, go up. Because right now, it's vacant land. So, there's very low increment being generated.
Got it, 10-4.
Yeah.
Um, I did make a, um, a request for unanimous consent on a second and third reading tonight.
Point of order, Mr. President?
Councilman Preswellensky?
Okay. The way I understand it, if, if there is an ordinance on first reading, in order to get a second and third reading, it has to be a dire emergency. Is that correct, Attorney Myers? Or, that's the way it was explained to me when I was the president of the council.
That's correct for every ordinance other than a zoning ordinance. State law allows a zoning ordinance to be passed on one reading. However, your rules require every ordinance, you don't make an exception for zoning, for three readings. So, that's why Councilman Paul Preswellensky is asking for unanimous consent, in essence, to waive your rule, not state law. State law allows passage on one reading, on the first reading, but to waive the council's rules requiring three readings. In other words, pass the ordinance tonight.
Okay, thank you. I learned something else tonight. Thank you.
And just quick comment?
Councilman Dabney?
Mr. President? Um, even, even though I'm a sponsor on this, I'm not in favor of running this through first, second, and third reading in one shot. Um, so, I would object to that, and we can come back on second reading. There's going to be people out in the public that may have something to say, that may want to voice an opinion, and we get into second reading, possibly take second and third, but I would object to doing first, second, and third at one time. Um, we had an issue like that a couple of years back, and it just did not go well, because it looked as though the council was pushing something through without having the public, even get a chance to, to take a peek at it. So, I object to first, second, and third reading in one night.
Okay. Uh, so, there's that. This ordinance will be held over. Well, is there any, uh, public comment on this ordinance? Any comments from the public on this ordinance? Any other council comment? Any other council comment? Okay, this ordinance will be held over for a second reading. Um, Ms. Nyle, our first ordinance on second reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on second reading by title only amending ordinance number 4546 to establish time period for implementation of rules established therein. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul Preswellensky.
Uh, does the author have anything to add at this time?
Um, just the same, um, information that I talked about at the last meeting, that this is more or less in essence of sunset, adding the sunset clause to the ordinance to have some control down there. And I, I want to reiterate the fact that we need to take this seriously because of what's going on right now on, on COVID and that, uh, even though we, uh, the park department had an opportunity to do something, we had a workshop with them. We had another workshop with them after the mayor signed this particular ordinance and did not bring up any problems that he saw in it. And at that time, none of the park department, uh, people brought up any, uh, points of interest or anything out of the workshop. But I will say that I, I did listen to, I appreciate Mr. Dabney's, uh, thought and, uh, put any clause in the ordinance on when it will be under some kind of control. And with passing this, the park will be open during the year, and they can regulate it, and they can shut it down if they so see fit. But the, but the thing really is, is that you have to have some control, and that's why I took this action on oversight on the park department, on the Washington Park. Now, some people have stated their objections, and I've tried to hear them and amend the original ordinance, so it's more workable. But the fact of the matter is this. I reached out to the police, the chief of police, gave them a copy of, uh, the reopening plan that I, that I got a copy of from the park board. And they're having under consultation right now that I wanted them to look at it so that they can give me some input. But what I was told by the police chief is that they had multiple incidents, reported incidents down in the park. They estimated that they had, they had a lot, a lot of people down there. So, with that, I went through the park board's minutes from March until now. There's no discussion of, uh, any mention of any plan or, or anything on what they should do after that incident. And let's just put it the way it is, a shooting incident that was related to the park that took place out in Lake Hills. And, uh, that, you know, I mean, so, let's not, let's cut right to the chase. That is our job, is that we are, if somebody doesn't want to do what they need to do, we need to have the oversight to protect the community, to protect the officers, the police that are down there, to, and just to protect the community in general, especially the residents of Michigan City, because it's their park. And I want to see it open, but you cannot have chaos down there. Under these, under these circumstances, we have to have some control. Now, they haven't demonstrated to me anything, and I read through this opening plan. And they're going to channel people up to Fetter's Alley. But the fact of the matter is, is this was delivered to the clerk's office, but I didn't see anything on their agenda. see anything on their agendas talking about this or voting on this to this date. So even if they would vote on it, it shows me a lack of forethought on doing something to show us that they have a plan and it's very viable and the police okay it. And, you know, that they have some input into it. And that's what I'm trying to do here, is I'm trying to protect everybody involved. And I'm not going to, and I'm not going to shoot from the hip and say everything's okay because everything isn't okay. My father-in-law went to St. Anthony's Hospital yesterday to get admitted. They wouldn't admit him. So you tell me what's going on. I think that this problem we have with this virus is not going to go away too soon. And we definitely have to control the park. Now, when the park board comes up with a viable plan, then I say it's time to, you know, disband the ordinance. But until that time, I think we need to keep it in place and we need to do our job. And I believe that, from my point of view, I want to have it safe. I don't want to have havoc down there. I want to be able to take my family down there, take my grandkids down there and know that it's protected. So with saying that, I know that I also talked to at our last, on the first reading, I made a comment to Councilwoman Dega and Councilman Dabney that I was going to be offering amendment. And then in turn, I see a ordinance introduced to repeal this ordinance. I'm not trying to hamper anybody's authority here because in all, it all comes down to oversight. When somebody's not doing their job, we need to step up to the plate and say, you guys aren't doing your job, you need to get it done. Because here's the whole thing, I feel responsible, you know, in some manner of what happened down there and the chaos that was going on down there. And we found out about all this chaos after the shooting, after they closed down the park because of the chaos down there, about having it overparked, having a rough estimate on how many people were coming into the park, just being chauffeured down there. And I know that from the video I watched by a gentleman that lives on Lake Hills Road or Lake Hills Drive. And the shooting took place in front of his house. So, you know, if, if you want to say everything's okay, it's not. So I think we need to stay the course and have the park board come up with something that's viable and that everybody can agree on. The police department, I think, needs to be involved and that's why I reached out to them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Any comments from the public on this ordinance?
I wanted, oh, you going first, public, then come back to us? Okay.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Rodney McCormick, 617 Union Street. I just want to thank city councilman Paul Preswalinski for what he just said. Been a long time coming. Everybody's, every department is always trying to do stuff without, we just have a lack of communication. Nobody wants to talk to each other. And I know we can come up with a solution if we work together. And I think that's what he was saying and I greatly appreciate it because there is problems at the park, whether you like it or not, there's serious issues at the park. But I think if all the departments and the city council come together, we can make this thing better for the people because that's what it's about, public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Any other comments from the public on this ordinance? Any comments from the public on this ordinance? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ed Shin. I'm the superintendent of the park department. And I would like to say that I do agree with Rodney McCormick. I think that we all should work together and we've made attempts. I think your intentions are good, Mr. Preswalinski. I would just like to refer to the fact that the park department did make attempts at meetings, and maybe you didn't go back far enough, but about July 15th, we raised the price of parking stickers in, of the parking, in the parking lot. And that was to raise funds for more police protection, more police presence. So there was an attempt. And like Mr. McCormick said, I think it's wise that we work together. That reopening plan is the plan that we came up with. At the time, there were problems down there because of the Chicago beaches being closed. And I would like to work together with the council to come up with a final plan. That is a preliminary plan. And I think the whole park department and park board would like to work together. That way there are no discrepancies and I think we can come up with a good plan. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shin. Any other public comments? Any other comments from the public? Any comments from the council?
Yeah.
Councilman Dabney, please.
So I understand you said you wanted to take control and put some, some, I guess, law, because that's what an ordinance is. What is the ordinance that's out there? What does it do now? What are some of the stipulations that we were talking about? As of right now, that ordinance still says there's supposed to be somebody at the gate checking to see if people are from the Port County? Am I correct?
No. That's all going to be amended to only read as it's stated in that, that it's setting up a time. All the other language is eliminated.
Okay, I'm trying to figure it out. Could you? I don't have it. I'm just trying to, what are your changes? I'm just, I know, I didn't get that. That's all I'm asking you. What are your changes?
Get it?
That's what I just said.
It, all the other language is being eliminated except that the stat, it's putting in a timeframe on when it's implemented.
I don't have an actual.
During the year, it's open. And the only time that the ordinance will be in place is during two weeks before Memorial Day and up until Labor Day.
Okay. So now that would stop.
So here's, so here's what I.
Just have a question, but I'm just, what you just told me, I just.
In essence, in essence, what Mr. Shin said is that we can work together. And that's what we should be doing instead of trying to, if you had some points that, and I listened to your points, Mr. Dabney, is that, you know, putting some kind of sunset clause in there, which I did. And I'm telling you that, or I'm trying to advise you, that I went through the minutes, I read through their minutes, and there was never anything that they ever took action on up until this date. So I believe that what I've done is reached out to the police department, gave them a copy of this plan and.
And they say that?
Go forward and they're going to get back with me and hopefully give me some input and move on from there on what they see to, and the chief appreciated me getting in touch with him that for the safety of the officers that are going to be down there. Because they did have incidents down there on July 4th. And that, I don't know how many police officers they had down there. But I'm going to try to find that out. We have one more meeting to develop the facts. And that's what we're trying to do here is develop the facts. So I will say that I think that when the park department passes a bona fide plan, that we can get rid of that ordinance. But we have to have some kind of control in place. Right now, it's, it's, you know, they're not observing that. The mayor's not observing having anybody on the gates. But here's the whole thing, Mr. Dabney, in essence, in true essence of the process. If the mayor and the park board had a problem with this, he could have vetoed this and then set up a meeting. So if you got a beef, I think you should take it up with the mayor.
I don't have a beef. That sounds personal. I don't have a beef.
Excuse me.
Okay, addressed.
If you have a problem with it, you need to ask the mayor if he had a problem, why he didn't veto it and call all the parties together. Because we already had two meetings with the park board and we got nowhere.
Okay.
Now, let me finish. That we were, we were speaking, when I say we, my brother and myself were speaking to the mayor about in some way opening up the beach, the park, to the residents of Michigan City. And the administration was going around saying we were going to get sued because that was discriminatory. And I'm thinking in my mind, how's it discriminatory? Because they pay the tax bills. It's their park. So in essence, I think there was a breakdown with the administration and his appointees on going forward with this or doing something for the safety of the citizens of Michigan City. To me, that's what it's about.
Okay. Councilman Dabney, your response?
I'm just, that's not really a response to what he said, but was there, because we talked about a committee or a workshop of some sort at the last meeting? Was there a workshop that I missed in between our last meeting and today? Because we talked about, you know, we're going to have a workshop and we're going to talk about this. It's like we had the workshop.
I never said nothing about a workshop that I recall. I said we had two different workshops, if you recall. We had one after.
I know we, I know we had, but I just thought somebody said we would have another workshop.
The last workshop, the last workshop we had in the EOC room, the previous workshops were via Zoom.
And so, so you, you know, you made your point. And then obviously I've made my point as to what this ordinance does right now to pass it, what would be on the books. And my thing is, you said we need to work together. I feel the same way. We do have a more than able liaison to the park department here that could work with the park department and, you know, bring things back to the council or even, you know, meet with the council as well to, with us moving forward. But like I said, I just, when I read the ordinance and what it does, that just made no sense to me. And this is why I have an ordinance to just take it off the books and let's do that process with everybody. I mean, we're entering October here, so there's no real big issues with the beach being crowded, people swimming, people going all over top of each other in regards to the COVID situation, which I thought this whole thing was about from the start. But now you went back and talked about the shooting. Right? And you did mention the shooting. So I'm trying to figure out what it's all, what is it all about? Safety in terms of a shooting or something like that is going to involve the police. You gave this to the police, they have not responded, but we're still moving forward.
Uh, Councilman Preswalinski?
That's it.
Mr. Dabney, this is about truly safety. It's not about having an upper hand on anybody. But can I finish, Mr. Dabney, without, you know, your comments? So anyway, is my point is this. We had several, this thing was on the table for four weeks, four weeks or five weeks. I had a phone call into the mayor, I never, to talk about this issue. I never got a call back. So I have been trying to work with people. You haven't reached out to me that I know of. And I told you, let's, let's cut right to the chase. I told you at the last council meeting that I was going to put some amendments up in here and try to make this more workable. If you had any ideas, you could have done that also and through the process amended the ordinance. But no, you introduced the ordinance to get rid of this ordinance. So I, I'm looking at it in a way that you're trying to be a little bit underhanded and then say, in one hand, that you're for, you know, you've said that safety, safety, we got to, you know, what's going on with COVID. Yeah, it's about safety. It doesn't matter if it's COVID or if it is about the park safety with individual residents. And that's what we need to be worried about.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I don't want to drag this on. I'm sorry. And I really apologize for this, but I have to say that.
This will be the last comment other than if any other from the council have comments.
And he's basically saying that, basically, I'm not considering safety. Well, every time we've had a chance to vote on the executive orders to keep the beach shut down, what was my vote? Every single time? Safety, 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 shut it down. So I resent that remark with you coming about and saying I'm not about the safety of the citizens. I was not looking for a loophole to try to get people into that park. I voted it down, shut it down every single time. So please don't put that out into the public that I wasn't about safety.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gies.
Thank you. So first of all, yes, there was an issue in July. Because every time we have something go wrong, maybe incredibly wrong, do we pass legislation to fix it? No. You communicate, you make a plan, and that is what was lacking. Correct. But you don't do that by legislation. I kind of doubt that an epidemiologist looked at your plan and said, oh yeah, every other space in this number is correct. We need to be flexible. We don't know what the future is going to hold. We're locking things in. How many people come in? Who can come in with a sticker, without a sticker? Can they charge for parking or not? You're locking all these things in, the hours, they can't even be flexible on the hours. The park department needs to have the ability to change. And yes, they need input and yes, we need communication. But we don't need a law to say how many parking spaces to go, what kind of color sticker you have, go on forever and ever, and then what hours. You have to be able to adjust. So this is totally inflexible and that's why I'm against it. I think it's like, like, like Councilman Dabney said, there is a possibility to make a plan without legislating it and then having to, you know, re-legislate it again when we change our mind. Oh, well, maybe the time isn't right. Another, you know, ordinance or an amendment. So this is why I am for getting rid of that ordinance and then working to actually do a plan with people with input instead of just saying every other seat and, you know, if you have this color sticker, you go and et cetera.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other council comment? Councilwoman Deitch?
You know, I understood why we passed the ordinance originally and I understand the comments from everybody. My question is, is there an amendment? I, did I miss something? Because I, I don't think, I think we said there was an amendment, Councilman Preswalinski, but I wouldn't, I don't have one. So I just wanted to make sure. Is, is there another amendment for this?
Yeah, there's an amendment that is putting a timeframe.
Oh, but everything else stayed?
No, it only is enacted during two weeks before Memorial Day and to Labor Day during the year.
Okay.
Okay. And during the rest of the year, it's open.
But everything else is still in there with the parking stickers and all of that? That's still all in there, right? Okay.
But that's what I'm saying, you can, nobody's offered any amendments up until this time.
I wasn't sure because I was confused because it sounded like we had done something else. And I was like, oh, it was just the dates that we had planned.
Right.
Okay.
And also that there's been no action by the park board up until this date.
Any other council comments?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to have third reading on this this evening.
Okay, were there any other council comments? Well, I do have, I had a comment on this. I'm sorry. I do agree that something needs to happen and I don't agree with just appealing it and that taking no action was the best recourse. I do believe that. Uh, I do believe that something had to happen. There uh, was obviously a safety and public health issue that was taking place down at Washington Park and uh, correct me if I'm wrong, everything was going on as it was status quo from what the park department and the park board had in place. So it was a knee jerk reaction and may not have been as eloquent as it should have been and it may have needed tweaking. But I still don't believe as the legislative body of this city, taking no action was, was responsible of it. So I, I agree with Councilman Preszwalinski for his attempt and I appreciate him at least trying. I completely disagree with repealing it or anything that would just completely nullify it. So I would not be for that anyway. And uh, guess that's about all I had to say with that. Um, Councilman Preszwalinski is uh, asking to have second and third reading on this. Are there any objections to suspending the rules to have second and third reading tonight? Uh, okay. So this uh, ordinance will be held up at the third reading. Ms. Nyalup, our second ordinance on second reading by title only. No objection.
An ordinance on second reading by.
Seven objected.
I didn't hear.
Okay, that was an objection.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, repealing ordinance number four, five, four, six entitled Establishing Rules for Attendance at and use of Washington Park and the penalties for violating same for violating park department rules concerning the use of Washington Park and the zoo. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Ms. Jagus.
Does Arthur have anything to add at this time? Is there any comments from the public on this ordinance? Please state your name and address for the record, please. Uh, Turner, your microphone.
Sorry.
Thank you.
My name is Kent Lang. I am a member of the park board and I will be very brief. Mr. Chris Valinsky, I sat here and I've listened to you and I heard you say, I reached out to the police department. I reached out to the mayor. You know who you didn't reach out to, Mr. Chris Valinsky? You didn't reach out to the park board. We never heard any communication whatsoever and all of a sudden you have this decree, decree that everything is to be closed down except for Michigan City people. And right now, we have signs there that say Michigan City people only. The number of people driving into the park now are minuscule. If you want to communicate, please let us know what you would like to do. All we ask is that you communicate with us and that hasn't been done.
Order, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, any other comments like that would be uh, not tolerated, so. Uh, any other comments from the public on this ordinance? Any council comments? Uh, Councilwoman Tillman.
I'm just curious. There was two workshops, two meetings regarding this.
Correct.
And that included the park.
Correct.
Is that not a form of notice to have open dialogue? That's all I'm stating.
Any other council comments? Councilwoman Deitch.
And, and that was gonna be my comment. I just thought that um, because I made the same comment that Councilman, um, Chris Valinsky made at one of the workshops and they were irritated because I said it. Because I, I thought too that um, you know, we've had two workshops and we hadn't seen anything that was tangible, tangible. So it looks like these are both going to the third reading. And I would hope, Ms. Bishan is in here still, uh, Ms. Lang isn't. But um, since, since uh, Councilman Chris Valinsky said we're willing to work together, that you beef up the plan that you currently have. And then maybe by the time we get to third reading, maybe half of us or some of us will decide that repealing it is the proper thing to do if we see a plan that's appropriate. You got two weeks to get it done. And to get it to us, to vet it with the police department, to do all those things, and then maybe you'll get a unanimous vote to repeal it. You got two weeks to get it done. Um, so I just think that we got time to get there still. Um, we got one versus the other. It's gonna be one or the other. And now is the time. Now we're up against the clock to get it done. But I, I, I agree that, I mean, we had two workshops and I, I, we didn't get a whole lot done. Um, I was frustrated. Um, but again, I, I think we still have an opportunity to change the, you know, the trajectory of where we're at and, and to give them the authority to do what they're supposed to do. But I do believe we need to see a comprehensive plan that's been vetted by the police and, and that you just, you know, get it to us and, and let's talk about it and, and go from there. And maybe we'll change our minds or change some of our minds anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilman Preszwalinski.
Yeah, thank you, President. I guess this is a question for the park superintendent since it was brought up. I didn't pay them, I haven't paid that much attention to it. But I guess is there, is there a sign right by the entrance way that says Michigan City residents only? And if there is, why is it there? It doesn't make any sense. Nobody's sitting down there checking stickers. And apparently I broke the law because I went through there with my sister from Milwaukee and nobody was there to check my license plate. So I don't know, I don't know why that sign is there. It doesn't make sense to me. I think the city administration should take it down. The city administration went and they, and, and under their own cognizance, took the people off the gates, right? We were supposed to have people down there checking the stickers. Well, that hasn't changed yet and they just took them off. They, that happened three weeks ago when we had that double track uh, meeting up at senior center. There were no people on the gate because the mayor told them, take them off. So why is there a sign there now saying Michigan City people only? This makes no sense whatsoever.
Doesn't the ordinance state that should be the case?
Pardon?
Doesn't the ordinance state that should be the case? The ordinance says on the books right now, doesn't it state that should be the case? That only certain folks, even if it's a sign.
Yes, you have the floor, Councilman President.
Can I have the floor? Go through the president if you'd like to address a council person. Thank you. The case is, the case is, then if we're gonna follow the ordinance, then there should be people working the gate. There are no people working the gate, but why do we have a sign out there? Right? If we're gonna have a sign out.
May I address the question, Mr. President?
Then put the people back on the gate.
That's, and that's what I'm saying.
But I don't see, there's no common sense to having people on the gate.
Okay, so. And the president didn't give me, I can't speak because the president did not tell me that I could speak.
Councilman Dabney's recognized.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just saying, but you know, where there's people or where there's a sign saying that, you know, the, the people from outside of La Porte County can't come in, it, it's, that is the sign or it says, and that is following the ordinance, not to the T and have people down there, uh, because then we have to pay overtime for folks like that. So maybe that's why they're, they're pulled out of there.
Okay, so this is like having a stop sign at an intersection. Just because the police aren't there, you're, it's supposed to be understood that you stop, okay? Uh, with the sign is, it's, I guess, partial compliance with what the ordinance states, but without the enforcement, I mean, anybody can ride through there not to just be put that out there. So I guess the signs, I know, I guess they're symbolic. But I, I did wanna add this part and this is for the park board, the park department, any other board of commission. You're not the ultimate authority of anything that goes down in this city. This body of people elected and representing the residents of this city is the governing body. So I know the park board is the management authority uh, in Panama with the uh, the park department and administration. But it has to get vetted through the nine of us. And if nine of us or five of us say, no, let's do it this way, then that's the way it goes. If five of us or six of us say, we're gonna do it this way, then that's the way it goes. We don't have to come to the park department and ask the apartment, uh, ask the park board, is it okay if we do this? If we see a need to do something, it's our job and our responsibility to do something. We don't have to answer to any board of commission or any board of commissioners. And uh, I would like to live in a place where we have open dialogue and everyone is in communication and things are in harmony. But if that's not the case, it's still our job to make sure that the public is safe and things are being ran the way we see them to run. It's our job. It's our responsibility. So uh, if there are no council comment, uh, Councilman Mack.
Uh, just wanted to say that we've been on this subject for a long time. Um, seems to me like we're continuing to do an autopsy of what was right and wrong at the beginning of COVID. And that is the only exercise that we're doing right now is, is, is going back over uh, old decisions. Um, and it sounds like there's more, uh, more to it. Um, I, I don't agree with putting a manufactured deadline uh, to address this issue on the, on the park board of, of two weeks. I mean, there's gonna be ice on the water in a short period of time. We've got two, three, four months before the real beach conversation comes up. There is, we're making up this uh, deadline and, and I'm for waiting to third reading if we have to on both of these to get a conclusion. Uh, but we're just making up this deadline. Um, starting from scratch. A honest group of people of goodwill that are trying to solve something forward can easily do this by calling that park board meeting together not to discuss an autopsy of something that exists, but to start from scratch and build something as partners so that we're all ready for whatever, March, April, May. Um, and, and, and that's why I'll be, that's the only reason I'd be for uh, repealing the bill is to give us an opportunity to work together so that operationally, not law, because we do pass the law, but so operationally, uh, nothing is done under duress where we can make decisions collaboratively and come up with the best uh, of, of everybody, not under pressure. So uh, that's just my two cents.
Uh, I wanna make a motion to table this pending a uh, review of the uh, Public Health and Safety Committee. And uh, or should, should we do a workshop with the park board?
I'd like a, a committee meeting so that we can um, the, my only concern is that we, we, we had the previous ordinance that we, we pushed forward third reading. These are two like.
They're almost the same. They can't swim together.
Competing ordinances, um, but it, you called for, he, he made a motion to uh, table it, so I guess it's still open.
Yeah, pending a, a review of the Public Health and Safety Committee.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to table this. Is there uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed.
Nay.
Okay.
Nay.
Ms. Nyalup on the roll call for this one, please.
Mr. Paul Preszwalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman? Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Nay.
Ms. Deitch?
Nay.
Mr. Paul, uh, Don Preszwalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
And Ms. Jagus? We have five in favor and four opposed.
Thank you. This motion, this uh, ordinance will be tabled pending a review of the Public Health. Uh, Ms. Nyalup.
All right, I'll set a, set a date for the, uh, for the committee meeting.
Okay.
Is this tabled until the next meeting and we're supposed to have a public?
Tabled until it's reviewed by the Public Health and Safety Committee.
Mr. President, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, i- if we could, and I think it's more of common sense than breaking a rule on a piece of paper, which is the ordinance that it bates on. But it, it, could the park department take that sign down? You know, Michigan, or Michigan City residents only? I mean, I don't know what the big deal is with that, but I don't know why we just can't take it down. I mean, we took the people off the gate with no one saying anything. Uh, this doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, also, before we go to the next one, I'd like to have a uh, seven minute break. I was like, we had, we had two hours. Okay, we'll uh, call the meeting back to order. I'd have a request to uh, move up an item on the agenda for the second time. Over two hours already, um, for our unfinished business nominations for the police commission. Um, are there any objections to moving this up before we get to the rest of the uh, ordinances? Okay, uh, unfinished business. Uh, the council has one appointment to the revolving loan fund committee. Term expires 10, 18, 20. Uh, nominees Jay Neese and Erica Miller. Are we, uh, voting on these tonight, correct? Yeah, we're, uh, voting on these tonight. So this is the first one for the revolving loan fund. Uh, is either the nominee here tonight? No. Okay. Uh, Ms. Nyalup. Uh, the revolving loan fund committee.
I'll be alone first.
Correct.
Okay, hold on. I'm not organized. Okay, um, so when I call your name, are you gonna say Jay Neese or Erica Miller? Um, also, did you read under the new business where that is?
Okay, so this was also uh, brought to my attention that for the revolving loan committee, uh, the expired, the expired seat was Ms. Pierre Parrott. And our record showed that Ms. Pierre Parrott uh, was never opened in the office, so. Uh, Attorney Myers, so would that make this uh, seat open as well?
I can't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
So this uh, Ms. Parrot, Pierre Parrot was never sworn into the revolving loan fund. So does that, uh, the revolving loan committee, so would that make that seat open as well?
Yes.
Okay, so see this how we have two seats. Uh, is it necessary to vote on the two nominees that we had already or can we just fire them?
It's up to the council. It's your rules. Typically, you require a nomination and then a vote at the next meeting. But you know, if the, if there's no objection, you know, you could do them both.
So there are two open seats now. So uh, is there any objections to appointing the two nominees that we have? Or do we wanna go through the votes and do, do the nomination process all over for the second seat?
Yeah, Mr. President, where's, where's that information at?
It's on the agenda.
No, it says the council has one appointment to the revolving loan committee.
Correct. And the record showed this uh, appointment.
Oh, okay, I didn't see, I didn't, I looked down to not under new business.
Yeah, so this, so this is technically a second seat that's open.
No, I, I object to uh, having these two people uh, under new business. Under new business should be new business because there may be somebody else that wants to get appointed at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so Ms. Nyalup on the vote.
Okay, Ms. Tillman? Do you want Mr. Neese or Erica Miller?
Erica Miller.
There you go. Mr. Dabney?
Miller.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Miller.
Mr. Mack?
Miller.
Ms. Deitch?
Miller.
Mr. Don Preszwalinski?
Jay Neese.
Mr. Simmons?
Miller.
Ms. Jagus?
Neese.
Mr. Paul Preswellinski?
Jay Neese.
We have three for Mr. Neese and six for Erica Miller. Erica Miller.
Okay, congratulations, Ms. Miller. Okay, the second vote we had was for the Police Civil Service Commission and we had three nominations last time. Was any other nominees present? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please. Can you turn the microphone on, please?
My name is William Walker. My address is 219 East Ninth Street. Yeah, I, since coming back to Michigan City the last three years, I've been looking forward to getting involved in civil service and started off with becoming assistant basketball coach at Michigan City High School and now just looking to further involve myself in my community. And I think that the Police Commission would be a good way to do that. I have to get to work, so that is my short speech. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Okay, were there any other nominees present? I don't, I think we did hear from the other two last meeting, so Ms. Nyalup on the vote.
Mr. Dabney?
Simmons.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Simmons.
Mr. Mack?
Walker.
Ms. Deitch?
Simmons.
Mr. Don Preswellinski?
Dennis Babcock.
Mr. Simmons?
Simmons, no relations.
Ms. Jagus?
Simmons.
Mr. Paul Preswellinski?
Babcock.
Ms. Tillman?
Simmons.
We have seven for Mr. Simmons and two for Mr. Babcock. One for Mr. Walker, and I just met him, a nice gentleman.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Simmons. Okay, getting back to our agenda the way it is. Ms. Nyalup, our third ordinance on second reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance, an ordinance on second reading by title only, amending municipal code section two dash four five seven, Commission on the Social Status of African American Males, and this is introduced by Ms. Tillman.
Does the author have anything to add at this time?
Yes, I had to redo my amending to my proposed ordinance in regards to the total number of members to the social status of African American males, which originally stood at thirteen members. And my proposed ordinance is to change it to fifteen members. That would be giving nine appointments that'll be made by the Common Council on the City of Michigan City on a yearly basis and shall be members of or participants in the following groups and entities. One from the Human Rights Commission, one from the Minority Health Coalition, one from the Swanson Center, one from the ministerial associations, one from the Welfare to Work Program, one Michigan City resident appointed by Common Council, one from the Michigan City Hope, one from the NAACP, and one member of the Common Council appointed by the Common Council.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. Does anyone from the public have anything to add to this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Any council comments?
I'd like to make a second to that amendment.
We have a.
There's amendment.
Pending amendment that people have to vote on.
President?
You have to do the amendment first, vote on the amendment.
So.
Then the ordinance.
Councilman President, can your second end of amendment?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of amending the. Section two, four, five, seven, African American males, as Councilwoman Tillman just read out. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Now, that goes to second to third reading?
You, if it's asked for.
I'd like to suspend this in second and third reading.
Suspend the rules to have second and third reading on this?
Tonight, yes.
Yes.
Are there any objections to suspending the rules for this ordinance? Are there any objections? Ms. Nyalup? This ordinance, first ordinance on third reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on third reading by title only. Amending municipal code section two dash four five seven, Commission on the Social Status of African American Males, and that's introduced by Ms. Tillman.
Any comments from the author at this time? Okay, are there any comments from the public? Any comment from the public on this ordinance? Any council comment? Any comments from the council?
A quick question.
Oh, go ahead.
I have one question. Due to the change in members for the council, it was brought on due to more members on the board than what was allotted. So there was originally a vote for an applicant that submitted their application and the council voted unanimously on it a couple of months back. So with that being said, that applicant. Would they need to, I'm going to address this to you, Attorney Meyer, will that applicant need to resubmit their application or can we vote on that?
You have to re-vote on it. I don't think you need to resubmit another application.
Can we re-vote on that now?
No, you gotta, first you gotta pass the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
To create the spot and then it's not on your agenda.
Right.
For voting. So you'd have to wait till next meeting, but yeah, you could, you know, vote to fill the spot and the other spots you've created.
That'll come up under the whole business then?
Right. Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, my question was with the increase in the numbers, we need, because we cannot increase the funding in the budget, we're going to need to find funds for the new position. They need, how many more of them?
I think there's only one. There'd only be one, so that'll probably be just an appropriation of about $600. Might be able to find that. Okay. Any other council comments? That motion to approve?
No move.
Yeah, we have a motion to approve by Councilman Paul Preswellinski and a second by Councilwoman Tillman. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Ms. Nyalup, our fourth ordinance on second reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending section seventy dash one oh one and division three of chapter seventy of the Michigan City Municipal Code regarding the Police Merit Commission, and this is introduced by Mr. Paul Preswellinski.
And note this, this proposed ordinance was tabled on second reading at the council meeting October sixth, twenty twenty, and is being brought back second reading tonight. Any comments from the author at this time?
Yes. The change in the original ordinance was to read, under reorganization of the commission, a nominee, a nominee must successfully complete a criminal background check. So now with that amendment, I've been in communication with the city attorney and I would, I would like to keep this on the table for at least one meeting because we're in discussions right now on who's going to be in charge of the background check and who's going to pay for the background check. So if it's going to be an outside agency or if it's going to be in-house, so I just spoke with her yesterday on it and I think that we might have to add some language and to clarify who's going to do, who's going to do the background check. Okay, so I would, at this time, I'm making a motion to keep it on the table until our next council meeting, so I can get this screened out with the city attorney.
Support.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilman Paul Preswellinski to table this until the next meeting and second by Councilwoman Deitch. All in favor of tabled in this until the next meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Ms. Nyalup, our fifth ordinance on second reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, an ordinance setting salaries and wages for appointed officials and employees of the City of Michigan City, Indiana for the calendar year two thousand twenty-one, and this is introduced by Mr. Dabney. The proposed ordinance was tabled at the council meeting on October sixth, two thousand twenty, and is being brought back on second reading tonight, October twentieth.
Does the author have anything to add at this time?
Nothing at this time.
Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Any council comments?
Yes, I, I would like to offer an amendment on the wages and salaries ordinance for the year of two thousand twenty-one in that it reads in that the pending wages and salary ordinances for the mayor, council, clerk, and appointed officials and employees for two thousand twenty-one will be amended to state the annual salary for each salary position, which shall be the same as the annual salary for the position for two thousand twenty. The ordinance will state the bi-weekly pay amounts for payment of that annual salary in twenty-seven equal by weekly installments. For any new salary position, the annualized amount stated as the bi-weekly pay for that position shall be stated as the annual salary for that position. The bi-weekly amount for the new salary positions stated in the pending ordinance multiplied by twenty-seven will be the twenty twenty-one salary. It is the intent of these amendments that each current existing salary position identified in the pending ordinance gets paid the same in two thousand twenty-one as it did in two thousand twenty. That is a simplification of making sure that the wages and their salary stays the same and that they do not have it incorporated into their pay.
Second.
Okay, so we have the amendment introduced by Councilman Preswellinski and seconded by Councilwoman Deitch. I'm sorry. Public comment was, we had moved on to public comment. So Ms. Nyalup on the vote?
Excuse me, comment?
Did we do?
Is there a public comment? Yeah.
Oh, 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 sorry.
I'm sorry. Public comment.
Okay, are there any public comments on this amendment? Any comments from the public on this amendment? Are there any comments from the public on this amendment? Any council comment?
Did we get a written copy of this?
Councilwoman Jagus?
Sorry, did we get a written copy of this amendment?
Yes, the clerk got it.
He did?
Any other council comment? Any other council comments?
Question for the author, so what we're saying here with this amendment is that we're going to keep the salaries at the same as they are in twenty twenty for two thousand twenty-one. Okay, thank you. Mike?
Yes, that is correct. Councilman Preswellinski and that there, their twenty-seven pay periods won't be rolled into their salary for next, for their twenty twenty-two pay period. Well.
Why, okay, I'm confused, why are we talking twenty twenty-two?
You're not, you're only talking twenty twenty-one. You're keeping the twenty twenty salaries.
Twenty twenty is going to be the second one.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Uh, Councilman Dabney?
I'm sorry, I stand corrected. Okay.
So a quick question is, so we're rewriting the salary ordinances, basically?
You are amending that part of the salary, of the ordinances, there's four of them, you're going to have to vote on each one, of course. But for the salaried slot, to the extent there is a salary slot as opposed to an hourly position, Mr. Paul Preswellinski's amendment is to amend that in essence to take away that twenty-seventh benefit of the twenty-seventh payment.
Another quick question for you, Mr. Meyer, we had something that was read from the Board of Works at the last meeting. It was, was it the, I can't call the name, was it actually the salary? Okay, now, does this put us in conflict with that that was passed by the Board of Works?
It may, but the council ordinance overrules any policy adopted by the Board of Works for salaries and wages.
Any other?
None of this affects any union contract rates.
Any other council comments? Any other council comments? So we have a motion and a second. Ms. Nyalup on the vote, please.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Nay.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinski?
Nay.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Nay.
Mr. Paul Preswellinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
We have five in, five in favor and four opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyalup. This will be held over to third reading.
Just a point, Mr. President, if we push to a third reading, we will be outside of our deadline in order to get the budget submitted by November first. So with all these that were tabled over to second reading, we need to take them second and third tonight in order to get this on so we can get the budget process put together and then ship down to the state by November first.
This.
Because our next meeting won't be for two weeks out, that'll be after November first.
This, this ordinance here needs to be, we need to do third reading on this.
Yeah.
So is there an objection to suspending the rules to have third reading on this ordinance? Okay, Ms. Nyalup, our second ordinance on third reading by title only without objection.
Okay, I don't have the paperwork for this and for people to sign it tonight, does that make a difference or not really?
Okay, so yes, we'll have to make sure that there's a point to make it to the clerk's office.
And can, Councilman Fitzpatrick, can we just make sure that when you read it, this is the amended, we're voting on what we just amended for this? Just want to clarify that.
Okay, so this third. So this second ordinance on third reading, including the amendment made by Councilman Paul Preswellinski.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, an ordinance setting salaries and wages for appointed officials and employees of the City of Michigan City, Indiana for the calendar year two thousand twenty-one, and this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Does the author have anything to add at this time?
Nothing at this time.
That's the. That's the, anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Any council comment?
Yeah, Mr. President?
Councilman President.
Yeah, all I'm going to say is very sweet, or very short, that, it's not sweet, I guarantee you that, where people aren't going to be getting paid for what they're doing, but my philosophy is, if you work, you get paid for what you do. I worked at U.S. Steel for 36 years, I was a salaried manager, and when it all started, it was great, but then through the years, you know, things happen because you're on salary. And I think everybody should be dealt with fairly. You come to work every day, and you should get paid for coming to work every day. Your pay shouldn't be shorted just because we're trying to save $76,000 out of the budget. There's plenty of other places that money could have been cut out of here to begin with, so I don't think we should do it on the back of the employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Nyla, want to vote?
Mr. Mack?
Wait, do we have a motion to approve this? No, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Or we have a motion by Councilwoman Deitch, and a second by Councilwoman Simmons. Ms. Nyla, want to vote?
Mr. Mack?
Nay.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Presblewski?
Nay.
Mr. Simmons? Ms. Jagus?
Nay.
Mr. Paul Presblewski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
We have five in favor and no one opposed.
Ordinance passes. Our six ordinance on second reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, an ordinance setting the annual salary for the mayor, and this is introduced by Mr. Dabney. The proposed ordinance was tabled at the council meeting on October 6, and is being brought back on second reading tonight, October 20.
Does the author have anything to add at this time?
Nothing at this time.
Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Any council comment? Any comments from the council? Councilwoman Majigus?
So the amendment we made in the last one, is that carrying through for all of these, or it was just?
That's up to the council, you have to vote on each one. Right. I mean, you can vote to approve it for all of them, or you can vote on individually.
So how would, okay, so that will cover the next three ordinances. So how would that motion need to be read, be stated?
Well, you've already approved it for all the ordinances, it's just that everybody needs to remember that now you're voting on the ordinance as amended by.
As amended.
Previously approved amendment.
So that, that amendment covered all of these?
Yes.
Okay, and we just need to restate it that this is?
That this is, you're voting on the ordinance as amended.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Okay, let me make sure I'm clear, so.
I'm sorry.
The, so, the amendment, I mean, I'm sorry, the motion could be to approve all of the annual salaries for each of these?
Well, each, each ordinance as it's read, needs to be, the motion to approve it needs to be made stating that this is the amended version.
Okay.
So were you making a motion? I'm sorry.
We're doing them one by one?
Yes.
Okay, so I move to, wait a minute, are we on second? So I'm, okay, let me go back, I'm trying to make sure, do I need to do, move to amend this?
No, you just, if you want.
Or do we go to second and third reading?
As amended.
So approve as amended, okay. I just want to make sure, because we're on second reading and not third.
Right, so you.
So we still can amend it.
You're supposed to, you've amended it.
Okay.
There was a request by Mr. Dabney, as I understood it, for these ordinances to be approved tonight on third reading, so that they get approved prior to November 1st, which is the deadline.
I just want to make sure we're on third reading.
Okay, well, it's not second reading now, but we'll need to suspend the rules if the council chooses to have third reading.
Okay.
On each one.
So she has to read them, though, for second reading, and then we have to go to third reading, is all I'm saying, right?
So can we include the second reading of all of them, and then the third reading of all of them? Or should we just amend the procedure, just the?
You can vote, it's your rules, if you don't have any objection among you, you can waive to, excuse me, go to third reading on all of them by one, you know, one vote.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's what I was asking, because we're on second.
Or you can do them one by one by one.
So I, so I ask that we waive the rules and, and move to third reading on the next, on all of the salary.
The next three ordinance.
Ordinances. Okay?
Okay, so we need to do second reading, and then?
We don't have to, I just asked to waive the second.
Second and third reading, okay.
To go to third.
Well, you're waiving the requirement to have three readings, so you can vote on it tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, what I'm trying to make sure we're doing, can we do all of this in one vote, or do we need to do two separate votes for the second reading and the third reading?
No, no, just one vote.
Okay. Okay, so your motion is?
To, to approve the amended ordinance setting salary for the mayor.
And the council, and the clerk?
And, oh, and the salary for the common council members and for the clerk. Can I do that?
Right, okay.
You have to vote on each ordinance separately.
I had it right. Okay, so I had it right, so let me, let me state that again. An amended ordinance setting the salary, the annual salary for the mayor, and I need a support.
Support. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilwoman Deitch, and a second by Councilwoman Simmons. Ms. Nyla, want to vote, please?
Hold on, I have to type these minutes. Angie just made a, a motion to suspend the rules.
No, I just asked for a suspension of the rules.
And move to third reading, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and it was second by?
You didn't need it. It's unanimous consent for that, right?
Right, there were no objections.
Okay, so now we need a vote. No, we don't, we're going on third reading, right?
Correct.
Okay. An ordinance on third reading by title only, an ordinance setting the annual salary for the mayor.
Does the author have anything to add at this time? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any council comment? Any council comments? Ms. Nyla, want to vote?
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Presblewski?
Aye.
Pardon? Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Nay.
Mr. Paul Presblewski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
And Mr. Mack?
Nay.
We have six in favor and three opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Uh, the next ordinance on second reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, an ordinance on, an ordinance setting the annual salaries for the common council members, and this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Does the author have anything to add at this time? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak? Any council comments? Any comments from the council?
I move to adopt the amended ordinance setting the annual salaries for the common council members.
Second.
Okay, and also request to suspend the rules, or do we?
Already did it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilwoman Deitch, and second by Councilman Presblewski, uh, Paul Presblewski. Ms. Nyla, want to vote, please?
Mr. Don Presblewski?
Nay.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Nay.
Mr. Paul Presblewski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Nay.
And Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
We have six in favor and three opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. The next ordinance on second reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, an ordinance setting the annual salary for the city clerk, and this is introduced by Mr. Dabney as well.
Does the author have anything to add at this time? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council?
I move that we adopt the amended salary for the city clerk.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Deitch, and seconded by Councilman Paul Presblewski.
And Councilwoman Tillman.
And Councilwoman Tillman. Uh, Ms. Nyla, want to vote, please?
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Nay.
Mr. Paul Presblewski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Nay.
And Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
And Mr. Don Presblewski?
Nay.
We have five in favor and four opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Our next ordinance on second reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, adopting policy to allow 5% of riverboat funds to be used to fund the city's operating expenditures from the general fund, and dedicating 50% of the river revenues to increase the rainy day fund balance up to the minimum of $6 million, and this is introduced by Mr. Fitzpatrick. The proposed ordinance was tabled at the council meeting on second reading, pending a council joint workshop, it is being brought back on second reading tonight, October 20.
And just quickly, we did have the workshop, and there was some back and forth dialogue, and some were for it, some were opposed, some believed that it was too drastic a change at once. So there were some concessions about a stepping it down, and kind of, I guess, weaning, weaning that city off of using so much of the riverboat fund. But I just want to add, the 5% fund, I, I understand where that may be a drastic change, see it as how we're so heavily dependent on a riverboat, and not negating the fact that we were without it for months, and could possibly be without it again, but, I mean, it is what it is. But I had a conversation with County Council President Novak, and the county just increased their rainy day fund, riverboat funds, from 10 million to 15 million. So they're doing the right thing and making sure that the county will be shored up in case, you know, something else happens where, you know, a flow of cash on hand is better than a hoping and praying that we get a check from some other outside body. But, you know, I think we've made some concessions on that as well, so. Is there anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Rodney McCormick, 617 Union Street. I came to the workshop, and I wanted to just thank everybody for doing a great job. People are, you guys work for the people. You don't work for no self-interests, you don't work for yourself, you work for the people. And our neighborhoods have been neglected for years. Y'all keep talking about cuts from the police department or the fire department, what about the cuts to the community that continues to happen? I mean, for God's sake, ain't nothing happening lately. Canada, Union Street is the original street, Union was, it was built from day one. Now just finally, after 10 years, just get a patch on the swimming, I don't have a swimming pool no more, thanks to the mayor, I guess, but this stuff cannot continue to happen, and y'all think that y'all not going to be held accountable next election. It just, it has to stop. I think what you're proposing is great, is, we need it. But when I was in that workshop, also noticed some other things that was very troubling, me. When are you guys going to work together? And I'm talking about the mayor also. When I used to listen to his speeches, and when he was running, and how he said he's, I'm going to work with the city council, I'm going to have a working relationship. All I've been hearing is name-calling. Calling people out of their names, interfering with stuff that he has no authority over, but at the end of the day, we can rectify that right now. You two guys, Ms. Tillman and Mr. Presblewski, I, I award you for doing your job, and finding where they can cut money. And this, this has to change. I don't know how much longer we're going to continue to do this, and you need to think about your wards, each and every one of you, and those who at large. New members come in, and you know, you're at-large member, you need to worry about everybody in the city, not just one specific group up, up north. The time has come. We had a last administration, the mayor was a tyrant, and it seemed like we moving in the same direction. Please work together so the people of this city can benefit from that riverboat money. Enough is enough, tore up police cars, nobody knows where the insurance money's going. It's time for this to stop. And if I just make one more suggestion, it's time to take the controller's office and privatize that. So when money come up missing, our things go bad, we can sue the people that, that beat us out of the money. Right now, I heard that we waiting on Murphy, see if he had a bond to get the money back? This is, doesn't make sense to me. But I want to thank you guys, y'all doing a good job, but y'all have to work together, and that is not happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Any council comment?
And Mr. President?
Councilman President.
Okay. How, how long will it take? Have you kind of, have you calculated it out by dedicating 50% of the riverboat revenues to hit the $6 million?
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but what, what we had at the workshop that we were provided with, the, the 2021 projection from the controller's office, if we were to take 50% of that, it was around $4 million or so dollars, and that would have been just for 2021, and then by the next year, if we would have did 50%, it would have only gone a couple months into 2022, and we would have been at the $6 million.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council. Any other comments from the council? Councilwoman Deitch?
Yes, I asked to be added to the, the ordinance, I mean, the ordinance, and I also have an amendment that was sent out to everybody by the clerk's office. So let me, let me state what the amendment is first, and then I'll move to, to make the amendment. And the amendment is to change this title to allow a percentage of the riverboat funds to be used to fund the city's operating expenditures from the general fund, and dedicating 25% of riverboat revenues to increase the rainy day fund balance up to a minimum of $6 million. And then the change goes, is down in the now therefore be it ordained by the common council of the City of Michigan City as follows. And it's the following schedule, 25% for the, for the 2022 budget, city budget, 20% for the 2023 budget, and 15% thereafter. And then added a clause, if fund drops below threshold of $6 million, 25% of the riverboat funds received by the city will be deposited in the subsequent years until it reaches the threshold. I move for, to make that amendment to that ordinance.
Support.
Support.
Okay, so we have an amendment by Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Councilman Preszbalinski. Uh, is there any other council comments? Uh, any comments from the public on this amendment? Any comments from the public on this amendment? Any council comments? Councilman Preszbalinski?
I, I appreciate that, uh, the, uh, thought in the amendment. And I was going to ask the chair, do you, do you have any, uh, comments on that? Does that, does that work with you?
Uh, I'm, I'm okay with amendments. I just wanted to make sure that we put something in place. Uh, the way I introduced it, I think was fine, but, you know, after conversating with everyone else, it seemed like it was drastic at once. So I'm okay with the stepping it down until we get to, uh, a more functioning, uh, more functional level where the, uh, the administration isn't so heavily burdened upfront and then we still are allowed to build up the rainy day fund.
Okay.
Just so the public knows, once the rainy day funds reaches, reaches its $6 million threshold, 100% of the riverboat funds are back available to do what's necessary. And the rainy day fund, however it sits, we still have the authority to use it if we see a reason to use it. And then the way the amendment reads, it will automatically start to replenish at the next fiscal year. So it, it's got to be a perpetual thing where the monies are there and accumulating. So if we do need them for the rainy day, they are there.
Do we have a motion in a sec? Oh, uh, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Deitch?
Uh, I also like the amendments. I, I like the numbers, but I would really appreciate maybe getting a set of values from, you know, the controller to see, you know, I, we got those numbers for the, you know, original one. And then just to kind of see where, you know, how this is going to affect our budget going on forward. So I would like to see that, but, you know, I, I do like to change it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other council comments?
Yeah, Mr. President?
Uh, Councilman Preszbalinski.
Oh, yeah, with, uh, Councilwoman, is I guess, uh, wanting that information, uh, Yvonne Hoffmaster was here this evening. And, uh, Yvonne, did you hear what the, uh, Councilwoman was request? Yeah, and if you could, when you get that, send that out to all the council people.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comment? Any other comments from the council?
Um, I ask that we, uh, suspend the, the rules and move to third reading possible. Oh, we didn't vote on the amendment. Mine, I done got ahead of myself.
Okay. Uh, are there any objections to the amendments to this ordinance?
Uh, Mr. President, I object because I'd like to get the information first from the, uh, controller's office to see what effect it's going to have, you know?
Yeah, we're voting on the amendment.
You're voting on the amendment?
Yeah, I messed that down.
Okay. Right. Okay, so, uh, Ms. Nyla, on the vote.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preszbalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Don Preszbalinski?
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
I'm good with it being held over.
Okay. This is being held over for third reading. Um, now of our next ordinance on second reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending section 38 dash 33 and section 38 dash 34 of the municipal code to provide for emergency relief funds, is the, two funds to city businesses. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch and co-sponsored by Mr. Fitzpatrick. The proposed ordinance was tabled indefinitely at the council meeting on June 3rd, 2020, and is being brought back on second reading tonight, October 20th, 2020.
Uh, does I have anything to add at this time?
Yes, so, um, this was tabled like six months.
Since it was tabled indefinitely, somebody has to move to take it off the table.
I move that we take it off the table.
Second.
So we have a motion in a second to remove this, uh, from the table. Um, any objections to removing this ordinance from the table?
All those in favor?
You can just ask all in favor.
Okay, all in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, uh, uh, does I have anything to add to this at this time?
Uh, so, yes, so, um, I brought this, um, back in May or June. Um, so this was, um, to add relief or COVID relief for small businesses that weren't able to receive any funding through any of the government programs or, um, um, like the PPP or the EIDL. And, um, spoke with the mayor, uh, and spoke, um, spoke to Mayor Perry and spoke to, um, um, uh, city controller, um, Ms. Mrs. Hoffmaster. And, um, discussed it. I do have a change though that I, I, I have for the clerk that I, I have in write, well, I gave to her in writing, but I need to read it. So I'm gonna start there. Uh, so we have COVID money that has to be spent before the end of the year. And so this is a reimbursement, um, um, this is reimbursement money, um, for it. So there's some certain parameters that the government, um, provided that we could assist with small businesses by providing grants to them. Um, and so we had already established some, uh, an application and some, uh, parameters around that. And we had a few minor changes from that. But one of the things that I, I didn't change, um, in the, uh, what you receive is that on C, and that was the, um, the change previously. It, it should say emergency grant. It shouldn't say forgivable loan. It should say emergency grant because of where the funds are coming from. And this is up to $5,000 to small businesses in Michigan City. Um, and, and the fund will utilize, um, up to, will utilize $150,000 from the COVID-19 relief funds. Um, and it has a list of all the different businesses that are in, included. And then in subsection, in number two on the second page, it should say minimum grant, um, is 25,000, except for the, it should say minimum, I'm sorry, let me make sure I say this right. I'm gonna read it directly so I don't mess it up. Subsection 385F terms is amended to read as follows. It says minimum loan is 25,000 and it should say except for grant described in section 4C, for which the minimum grant shall be, um, $1,000 and a maximum of $5,000. And, um, it has to state it that way because of the type of funding that it is. It can't say loan, that it's a loan. It's the actual grant. And then the application, um, which is a draft that still can be, um, scrutinized. Um, but what, what, what we're saying is that, um, this has to be spent this year. So the process, um, the applications are due by the close of business on December 4th of 2020. Um, and the recipients will be notified during the week of December 7th and then payments December, um, disseminated no later than December 8th because we need time to get the, uh, the money out. Um, there were some requirements that the government required. So, um, we made sure that the application had all of that information, you know, the business name, employees, all of that stuff. Um, it also asked for some owner information. Um, and then they also have to provide us with proof of all their exp- uh, anything that they spent the money on, um, whether it was utilities, rent, personal protective equipment, PPE, anything of that nature. They have to provide us those receipts, um, with the application. But we have to have that all in advance. So they have to do this all upfront. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that, um, I explained that this is not money coming from, um, um, this is COVID money, relief money that we receive that has to be spent this year. Um, so, um, I would like to, uh, move for, to make that amendment.
Support.
Okay, uh, we have a motion to accept the amendment and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Uh, all right, any, any comments from the public on this ordinance?
I wanted to, I wanted to ask, um, for this one, this is of, of a time, um, um, this is time sensitive for businesses. And I asked, um, suspend the rules to, to move this to third reading to allow businesses more time to at least get the application in for, and for us to share the information with the local businesses.
Uh, Councilman Preszbalinski?
Um, with this application, and I read through some of the qualifications, is there anything in there that says anything when you, you talk about, is it specifically on what's online on the ordinance? Or do you consider, um, somebody applying for the grant like in the recreation industry? I, I know that there's things in there like gyms and, and stuff like that, but I was also wondering about small businesses, some people that work in the boating industry. There's a couple of people that run private, uh, small businesses in town. And I consider that recreational, I mean?
I think that's all, I'm going to say this for the record. I think it's any small business that's not a national chain that, uh, or is, they can be a nonprofit. So we just tried to spell out as many as we could.
Okay.
Um, but I would say that if it's a small business in Michigan City that not, did not receive any funding, that they're eligible.
Okay. And I'd like to ask the chair to, or the author to be a co-author on this also. Cause I, I think it's long overdue. And, uh, the small businesses in town, it's just like the residents in town. We need to, uh, move forward on it and, and get something done in a hurry. How much, another question. Have you had, do you have an accurate figure how much is left in that COVID money?
That's how much was, um, agreed, agreed to, um, allocate to it.
Okay, all right.
Councilwoman Deitch?
Uh, if you would like maybe for that section four, you could say including but not limited to. Maybe you could add that as an amendment. I'm just saying, like, instead of saying including, including but not limited to these following.
Good question. Just for clarification, and, uh, I know the answer to it. I know what Angie's going to say, but I'm going to give her a chance to say it. And these were just changes in what they said we could use the money for. And then so we were able to release those funds. Am I correct? Cause we had the, the COVID money and then, and then, because when we first started this, we were talking about using city money. And that was the big hangup with everybody in the council. But now we're able to use the COVID money. And so they, they opened up kind of the
Right.
the uses that we can use it for.
Yep. I just changed it to say COVID-19
Right.
emergency funds. Cause, um, at the time, I was looking at all kind of money. Prime this, you name it, I was going to ask for the money.
And that's, that's where I was at too.
But, um, this is directly, strictly COVID-19 money.
Thank you.
Councilman Preszbalinski?
Yeah, Mr. President, are we, we're on the amendment right now for third reading or what, what are we at in the process?
We voted on the amendment already. And that was just discussion.
We still got to vote on whether to have third reading or not.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, Councilwoman Deitch made a motion.
Yeah, so we're, uh, is there any, uh, anyone opposed to having third reading on this tonight?
Um, Mr. President, if, if I may, just to add a little light, because I did talk to the city controller about this, uh, COVID money, not so much about the, the ordinance, but about this COVID money and where the city sits with, with the COVID money. So this was part of the $1 million that we got from the state. Now we're down to $150,000 left in that account. Now, yeah, the city controller said, you got it? You want to spend it? We can do that. Mayor agreed with the city controller. Where my concern is, and I'm not saying that this is a bad ordinance, but where my concern is at, is that when this $150,000 is gone, it's gone. We don't know if, and COVID is not going to be gone come January the 1st. What I'd like to see is that the city take an inventory of COVID supplies that they have, face masks, gowns, what have you, hand sanitizers for the police, for the fire, for all these different, uh, for the bus system, for the, you know, the transit workers, everybody in town. To make sure that we have in our supply line enough supplies to get us through for about six months through June of next year. Cause COVID's not going to be over. You know, we're setting record high numbers right now and we're going to continue to do that. And the city controller told me that next year, if a department has to buy COVID materials for their department, it's going to have to come out of their general fund budget. So now the general fund is going to be affected as we didn't go out now, check our supplies, load up on what we need. And then if there's any monies left over from that, then it can go to this loan program. What the deal is, is we have to take care of the city first, make sure we got enough supplies to get us through for six months. And then whatever money's left, then we can give it to this, uh, uh, program. And I'm thinking if we can wait two weeks to see what the city has, to see what the city has in their supply and they feel good that it's going to last the city for six months, we're not going to have to reach into the general fund, that, that's the right and prudent way to go. I'm here, I want to help every business owner in town. And I know that they could probably, some can use relief, others are doing fine. But I think from a common sense and a fiscal standpoint, we got to look after what we're doing. Make sure we got the supplies. After that, if there's $100,000 left, then we could give it to this program and go from there. Thank you.
I need to make a, ask a question because when I had the conversation, um, I was under the impression that this wasn't deple- this may not deplete the full amount that they still had, is this, uh, everything? And I thought that they had done an inventory with the di- different departments on, on where they were at. Um, and maybe, I don't know, if the Hoffmaster can answer that or not.
Good evening. Yvonne Hoff, master city controller. Um, no, we, we haven't actually done an inventory of what all the departments have, but that is something that we can take care of tomorrow. When, when the mayor and I spoke about this, you know, you know, because we never thought this was a bad idea to help. We were just concerned back earlier in the year about using city funds to fund this. So when they opened up the uses for the COVID, I, I told the mayor that I believe that we could release $150,000 of these funds to help this program. Um, the, the bulk of this money, we will be using to recoup salaries from the police and fire. So what we could do, if we needed to buy additional supplies, we would use the money for that and not for the salaries. So we could still leave this money intact.
Thank you. That's, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure you, you stated that. Because I knew that there was other money still there and available. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Deitch?
Yes, I'm not sure how this jurisdiction works, but I do know that the county, La Porte County, has very good stock of PPE, et cetera. And I'm not sure, do we work together and how we, we fund that, but they use, I'm sure they're using COVID money as well to stock up. But they use, I'm sure they're using COVID money as well to stock up. They, they say they're really well supplied, I think, no, we need to check with them if we're really gonna be desperate.
Thank you, Council.
Well, I'll go back to, is anybody, I mean, I'm asking for third reading tonight, so, um, is anybody opposed to that? Um, Council, uh, President Fitzpatrick.
Uh, I just have one, I just have one more comment on what, uh, city controller Hoffmaster said. He said, we could go ahead and use this hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And if we needed money, we could take it out of the funds that the police salary was gonna be paid for out of the COVID. So in essence, we're still gonna be taking money out of the general fund to pay for this.
No, this is COVID money.
No, I, I understand, I understand that, I understand that Angie. And what, what my point is, is she just said, we can have the hundred and fifty thousand, but then, the police, if we need money for COVID supplies, will take it out of the money that we were gonna pay the police salaries with, correct?
Twenty twenty police salary. Correct.
Okay.
Not next year's.
But then, to pay those salaries, we'll still have to take it out of the general fund, so it was either do this or do that, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah.
But it's a reimbursement to salaries that have already been paid for this year. It's, it's salaries that have already been paid in twenty twenty, this year. It's a reimbursement.
Right. Okay, well, so then we still have to take, either way, if we're gonna take a hundred and fifty out of this, or we would take a hundred and fifty out of the.
That's, that's if there's any additional overtime that's COVID related, correct?
Right. Yeah, it's gotta be COVID related.
Right, for this year.
By the end of the year
Right.
gotta be spent. The hundred and fifty's gotta be spent, if it's not spent, then it just goes away.
Yeah. Missed opportunity.
That's what, that's how this is, is, this is gonna work.
But the other funds that were for police overtime would still be available if there is police overtime between now and the end of the year?
Well, when they changed the parameters on what we can expend these, um, COVID funds on, they included all salaries and benefits for public safety employees. Um, we, we, we spend twenty million dollars a year on the salaries for the police and fire, with their benefits and everything, close to twenty million dollars. So what we would do, if there is any money left, we will either order supplies that may be needed, or we will just apply that to additional salaries for our public safety to be reimbursed on. So we're not going to miss out on, on recouping any of the million dollars that we've been allocated.
Uh, and I, and I understand that. I just wanna make sure we have the proper amount of supplies, and we don't have to go to the general fund to take the money out. That's my whole point. Because the point is, we have money, we have COVID money, we should make sure that we have, we have our supplies first for the police, fire, transit, city hall, whoever, to make sure we got that first, and whatsoever left, give it to the program. It may, I don't know how much all this stuff costs, it may only cost twenty-five thousand bucks, you know, to order up a six-month supply of this stuff, it may be ten thousand, I don't know. But I'm just saying, let's take care of us first, get our supplies, get everything in-house, and then give the rest of the money to the program. And don't go to the general fund. I mean, we can't give out raises, we can't do this, we can't do that. But yet, we're ready to go to the general fund and give money out. So that's my point.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Tillman.
Um, just two things, one is, in regards to the, um, COVID funding, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but when I asked to control the Hoffmaster, where we're at right now, and the IP equipment, this is COVID funded, for COVID. Wh- where was those concerns then? Because technically, we shouldn't even be here now, but we're here. Being a county employee, um, in regards to the COVID supplies, this is my second, uh, statement. Uh, what the county does is, um, every three months, we get an email sent out roughly every three months, asking what does our supply look like, but we have to report in and let them know what we need. This waiting till the last minute, this should have been done before now asking about supply. So if something like that is, once, if you do the, um, supply, COVID supply tech tomorrow, then that might be a recommendation for, um, something to be set in place where departments have to report quarterly or once a month of what they need. I mean, and because the supply, uh, you, you, Ms. Councilman, uh, Zegus, you said that county has a lot, I'm still waiting on supplies.
Uh, Councilman Paul Presmeneski.
Um, I am, uh, on the same line as, uh, Councilwoman Tillman, and that, and that is this. Whenever this was agreed upon, that should have been thought about at that time. They agreed upon that they, they could use this money. So it's not to go backwards, and, and we have an opportunity to do something for the small business community in Michigan City, and we should have, this should have been worked on a long time ago. And I think Angie brought, uh, excuse me, Councilwoman Deitch came out and had something prior, what? In May, and that, no activity by the administration. And now we are in the, in the, in the final twenty yards of the race, in the hundred-yard dash, to use this money, and we need to use it. Because it sure as heck, I don't feel comfortable being here, and I feel that there should be plexiglass shields on each side of me. And I, and I think each one of these chairs, as we know, to be eight feet apart, not six feet apart. So what I'm getting at is this. We need to use the money, let's use it, if we need some more money to get this place up to date, or city hall up to date. Because I'm, I'm tired of, I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable here. I do not feel comfortable here. Let me ask you something, do you know if this table was wiped off today? Do you know if this mic system was wiped off, was it sanitized? I came in the room and there was no mask there. There were no masks here. So I think that we need to go ahead and get this passed, and we can talk about the supplies and all this other stuff later. And if we have money and do an appropriation, and have a serious conversation about our safety. Alright, where we're meeting at. Thank you.
Are there still any objections?
Thank you, Council.
Councilman Fitzpatrick, we, we got comments instead of it. Is anybody objecting to third reading? Um, I'm just asking for a point order, for you to reiterate it again.
Um, are there objections to having third reading on this night?
Objection.
Okay, so, yeah, there is an objection, so this will be held over to the third reading.
Yeah, Mr. President, the only objection is, is because I wanna have, at the next meeting, I wanna have inventory to see what the city needs and how much it's gonna cost, then we can move on from there.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Uh, our first ordinance on third reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on third reading by title only approving reduction of appropriation in the city. Uh, twenty twenty annual budget, and this is introduced by Mr.
Uh, does the author have anything to add at this time?
Nothing, we've been over this a few times, no comments.
Okay, all right, any comments from the public on this ordinance? Any comments from the public on this ordinance? Any council comment? Any comments from the council?
Move for adoption.
We have a motion to adopt by Councilwoman Deitch, or second by Councilwoman Dabney. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, pass. Stop of our second ordinance on third reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, ordinance or resolution for appropriation in tax rate, and this is introduced by Mr. Dabney as well.
Uh, author have anything to add at this time?
Amen.
Any comments from the public on this ordinance? Any comments from the public on this ordinance? Any council comment? Uh, Councilman Pressman.
Um, we, we, uh, had discussions about amendments on third reading. Was it, was this agreed to to have amendments on third reading on this ordinance? I, I can't recall.
No.
No? Okay, well, with, with that being said, is, uh, you know, on the line item that I'm looking at, on contractual services, is that, would this, uh, would have been an appropriate time to make an amendment to, uh, remove money out of the general budget under this, because it says, you know, ordinance for appropriation and tax rates?
Second reading.
Mr. Dabney, would this been an appropriate time to make an amendment?
Second reading.
What's that?
It would have been appropriate to make it on second reading.
Okay, well, just, uh, I mis, I misread the agenda, because I thought it was on second reading. But with that being said, is that I, I did wanna make an amendment, but just to put it out there about worried about money. Um, on this line item, um, and this is a general fund budget worksheet that was put out by the controller's office. And there's, uh, in contractual services, um, there is, uh, three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars and four hundred and twenty, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So, um, we're talking about saving money, well, I, I can't make that amendment because I know that Mr. Dabney said that he would object to any amendments on third reading. So, it is my fault for, on not reading the piece of paper correctly, but I wanna remind everyone that last year, that we talked about in the contract for Wall Bass Street, and the other services on Franklin Street, that contract was a hundred and ten dollars. So I presume that that money's coming out of here, because it's going through the Board of Works. Also, last year, last year, we spent four, over four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars on one consulting firm, engineering firm in town. I think a total last year was spent seven hundred thousand dollars in engineering fees. So, I, I'm gonna say this tonight, people wanna look at the budget, I'm gonna be watching this budget all the time. Because if we would have been watching it all the time, and I think that we need to look at some things, what happened last year? Not, not anything to do with the city council, but I think what was let go in the controller's office, what happened, is that the over, I don't know how you can overestimate your anticipated tax revenues to the degree of three point six million dollars, but we need to find out some way, we need to find out exactly what transpired. Because, um, I just think that either the controller was at fault, not advising the, the city council what was going on to make appropriate moves. So it sure would have been nice to have that money today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, uh. Any other council comment? Any other council comment?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Councilman, uh, Dabney, and second by Councilwoman Magigas. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Nay.
We have eight in favor and one in opposed. Councilman, uh, Paul Presmeneski. Okay, uh, our third ordinance on third reading by title only without objection.
An or, an ordinance on third reading by title only, an ordinance establishing salaries for the fire department of the city of Michigan City for the calendar year two thousand twenty-one, and this is also introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Does the author have anything to add at this time? Uh, any comments from the public on this ordinance? Any comments from the public? Any council comments? Any comments from the council?
Move for adoption.
Four.
Uh, we have a motion by Councilwoman Deitch to adopt, and second by Councilman Dabney. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And we have nine in favor and none opposed. Uh, our fourth ordinance on title, our third reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, an ordinance establishing salaries for the police department of the city of Michigan City for the calendar year two thousand twenty-one. And this is also introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Does the author have anything to add at this time? Uh, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Council comment?
Motion to adopt.
Four.
We have a, a motion to adopt by Councilman Paul Presmeneski, and second by Councilwoman Tillman, and Councilwoman. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Uh, new business, the council has one appointment to the revolving loan fund committee, term expires ten eighteen twenty. Come in, Pia Parry, and note, Ms. Parry replaced Hera Crump and was never sworn in.
I, I have a comment for that.
Yes.
So, um, Ms. Pia, um, Perro, um, the, it was under, it was my understanding, and I know that, um, I reached out to, um, um, Clarence House as well, and, uh, when I saw this, because we thought it was a four-year appointment. And was, did the clerk's office reach out to Ms. Perro to, to get sworn in? Or not? Because we, I know we voted her in.
She, we voted her in, but she never came in and, um, did her oath, also, her term ran out, because she was, she was, uh, completing someone's else.
Okay, so she was just the remaining, so, okay, because I think there was, there was communication issue, because I think they thought that, um, she was replacing that person and just doing a full term. So if she would like to do it, I need to tell her to reapply then.
Reapply, correct.
Okay, okay. Because I, I think that, um, he, he thought she was selected for a full term and didn't realize that, so I'll reach back out, and if she's interested, fine, if she's not, fine. But, um, I think there was just a communication issue for that one, so I just wanted to clear that up. Thank you.
Uh, any comments from the public?
Excuse me. Aren't you gonna ask for nomination?
Uh.
Let people know that, our members know that they need to provide nominations for your committee members?
Okay, yeah, so the revolving loan fund committee has an opening, so anyone willing, uh, wanting to serve on there, needs to get their application into the clerk's office prior to our next, the cutoff for the next meeting's agenda.
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen, Junior Street. Was the issue ever resolved on the, uh, longevity?
I think that's still in the discussions. That wasn't something I was all the way following. Uh, Councilwoman Tillman, do you have more information about that?
And to my understanding, I would say no. Um, and the reasoning is, I originally, um, requested from the personnel a list of all city employees that was hired from two thousand eighteen through twenty twenty. And on yesterday, well, but, uh, prior to that, um, I asked for a follow-up, because I hadn't received the information. And on yesterday, well, uh, prior to that, um, I asked for a follow-up because I hadn't received the information that I requested. And, um, the personnel stated that I'll get a follow-up from Mayor Perry. Okay, so on yesterday, I received an email with three employees. Um, the email was from, um, Mayor Perry, with the three, three employees. I, I don't understand why it was just the three employees. So am I under, to understand then that the city has not hired any new employees since, after two thousand eighteen? And why was it just those three listed? Um, in regards to the longevity? No. All I can say is no.
The, the reason why I asked that question was because I was at that council meeting where um, the mayor was, came off very disrespectful to the Councilwoman. It was, a lot of us in the community was talking about it. Um, hm, beginning, being elected mayor or having the title mayor doesn't make you a leader. Leader is what you do when you have to follow, when you have to work with others and, and get things done. And I just think that, my understanding that it was illegal what, what was done, if that's so, even if it's not so, I think that the mayor should man up and apologize for his comments in a way, because we was, a lot of us in the community was disrespected, feel disrespected by, by what he did. It's obvious Ms. Tillman does know what she's talking about. So with that being said, you guys have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
President, if I may.
Let me get to the rest of, uh, public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there any other, uh, public comment? Any other comments from the public? Any comments from the mayor? Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, council comment? Councilwoman Tillman?
Um, in closing, in regard to the longevity, um, I would like to request a public apology from Mayor Perry in regards to the prepared statement that he read at the prior council meeting. Uh, defamation of character and slander indicating that I took some type of illegal act of requesting documentation due to that I am one, a councilwoman, and I am also sitting on the Finance Committee, which I am entitled to request and to obtain that information. Because, one, we are in the middle of our budget. And, uh, again, I, I was just appalled by the statements that was made. And based on, if indeed I did something illegal, based off of the statement, then why did Mayor Perry provide me with the three employees? Which I did not ask for anyone specific. Again, I requested all city employees hired two thousand eighteen through twenty twenty. And I did not ask if these other employees were long, if their longevity was, um, a part of the negotiation of them being hired. But I did inquire from Attorney Ambula Page and from Attorney Meyer that question. I did get a reply back, uh, from Attorney Meyer. I even asked the question if I did anything illegal. Oh. So that's defamation of character and slander. And as I sit, sit here today to say, when I speak, I'm gonna have facts and documentation, not hearsay, not awful second-hand or third-hand information. I'm gonna have the supporting information. So if I did anything illegal, then why was it that you then provided me with a third of the information that I requested via email on yesterday? So based on that, Attorney Mayor Perry, I'm requesting a public apology from you. And also, per Attorney Meyer, if those negotiations was made in regards to the longevity, that has to come in front of the council for approval. And it did not, not for not, not for any of the three that he provided the names for.
Thanks, Council. Uh, any other council comment? Councilman Mack?
Real quickly, I attended a, uh, open house this past weekend at the Sacred Heart Church. It's our homeless shelter in my ward, and I just wanted to, uh, congratulate and thank them. They had a matching grant sometime last year, and they did a lot of renovations. They've got the men's and the women's separated, uh, took a tour of the place. Uh, just outstanding people and another group that does similar assistance in, uh, in my ward, uh, the Rise and Shine Breakfast Ministries. During these COVID times, uh, you know, those two groups in the third ward are doing an outstanding job, and I'm looking forward to, uh, giving them more, uh, more attention. And, uh, anybody in the public that, uh, wants to take a peek at some of the great work that's being done during this pandemic, those two groups are doing outstanding work.
Thanks, Councilman. Uh, Councilwoman, aye?
Um, a couple of things, so, um, I know I'll be calling a workshop for, um, not workshop, well, maybe, yeah. I'll have to decide on committee meeting or workshop for, um, fire commission. Um, a couple of things have come up. Um, we had promotional testing, there were some issues that arose. Um, and I need to ha, put together a workshop with the, um, administration along with, um, the commission and, and some reps from the Fire Department to, to talk about the ordinances. Um, there's some problems, um, with the promotional hire, the promotional testing that need to be resolved. Um, it was quite evident, I had a lot of qu, some questions that I posed and some scenarios that they couldn't really answer. Um, so that will be coming here shortly. Um, we had a special meeting, um, last week so that, uh, we could hear, uh, they had executive session to talk about, talk through appeals, and it was evident that there was some some issues in how people were reading the ordinance and how they were, um, um, enacting or, uh, following, following the direction. Um, so that will be coming here shortly as far as, as a meeting, um, a workshop, so that everybody can participate in here with going on, um, with that. Um, second thing, um, so eleven four is our next council meeting, so if this amendment, um, if this, uh, amendment, uh, passes for the small businesses for the relief fund, we'll have everything ready to go for small businesses, the application updated and ready to go, I'm waiting for that. They will have approximately, um, a month to, to get that completed, um, once we get it out there. But the goal is to pull the trigger the day after. So that'll be the goal, is to have it ready. So, um, small businesses will have, um, we won't be able to share it until then, but, um, just be prepared for that. Um, and I just wanted to make sure, uh, I stated that. And then, the last thing is, um, you know, get out and vote. Um, vote early, have a plan, just like everybody said. Um, have a plan of what you want to do. I know the wait times in certain places have been longer than normal. Um, we know that, you know, um, they've already counted almost twenty million votes across the United States, so, um, everybody knows this, this is an important election. And so I just want to make sure that everybody knows where your, where your places are to vote here early. Um, but it's important that you exercise your right to vote. Um, and lastly, um, I'm, I'm gonna request it, I don't know what we're doing the next meeting, but, um, I would like to be virtual if possible. The numbers are going up, LaPorte had theirs virtual last night, they had the Board of Works virtual today. The numbers are increasing, we're still in this place. Even though I don't want to be here, I pressed that the last time, I'm not gonna be in a building that time. So I will be absent if we don't have some other arrangement on eleven four, just so that you all know. Um, and that's my last comment, so have a good evening.
Councilwoman Deitch, I have one question. Uh, for the, uh, the ordinance amendments that we're waiting on the information for, is it possible to get the applications to the, uh, businesses ahead of time so if they're ready?
What if it don't pass?
Well, I mean, just so they don't have to wait, so they can get the process going, so that they know what they need to prepare.
I can post a draft somewhere and just say it's a draft tentative if, you know, you might need this in case.
Right upon approval by the council, just so maybe people could start gathering the information they need, so they're ready at that date since they'll be at a time crunch.
All they need to know is that they need to have the appropriate documentation for their business, number one. They need to have receipts. Um, you know, it's gonna be important that they have all the receipts and that they did not receive any government funding, that's a start. Um, so I think if they start there, it's an easy application, it won't be that hard.
Right. Uh, Councilman Preswellis?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just a, a couple of things, and this here is an FYI for the, uh, council members, and I already talked to, uh, Angie about it a couple of weeks ago and told her I was gonna bring it up. Uh, and not that she's not doing a great job on the board, she's doing a great job. This here is just for, uh, transparency for the EDC Board. If there are any council members that are interested in getting on that board, the process is, is in October, go down, you see Clarence, and, you know, make him, notify him that you wish to be on that board. And then in November, they take nominations, and then in December, they take the vote for the councilperson. So I never was made privy to that, but I just want to make sure all the council members are aware of that. Okay, talking about what I think is the biggest thing in LaPorte County and the biggest thing in the nation, and we all hopefully think that ways is COVID nineteen. For the general public, uh, there were five deaths in LaPorte County this past weekend for COVID. And yesterday, Monday, uh, there were nine reported in the county and one in Michigan City. And today, there were twenty-two cases in the county and twelve of them in Michigan City. So the numbers are going up. You know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be bad, and I agree with, uh, Councilwoman Deitch, far as, uh, having a proper eating place, and whether we put Plexiglas up in between eating fun of us, or whatever the situation is. Uh, I, I totally, I totally agree. I don't want to see anybody get sick with this, uh, with this virus. And as Angie, uh, stated, uh, we got election coming up, that's why I'm wearing my, I'm sure you've noticed, my vote, you know, mouthpiece. Uh, and it, it's very important, November the third, have a plan, get there early, do what I, do, uh, do whatever you gotta do. So I just wanted to talk about those three, uh, things tonight. And I, and Angie, or Councilwoman Deitch, I just want to, uh, respond to, you know, I think your ordinance is good, I think the amendment's good. It's just that, as I stated, I want to make sure the city has what we need. And then we can use the monies, whatever left over, for, for the, uh, ordinance. Not that I'm against the ordinance, I just want to make sure that the city taking care of what they have to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, real quick, uh, just to throw an announcement out there, it's ten thirty, so I don't know how many people are actually watching still. But, uh, the Eastport Neighborhood Improvement Group is doing a cleanup event this Saturday from nine to twelve. I will be starting down at the, uh, Fire Training Station. And I went past there and, and, and met with the, the folks that run that place. There is enough room in there for us to be able to spread out while we're indoors. Uh, but we will be out, uh, walking up and down the boulevard from Risky Avenue to Poplar. And if we get enough volunteers, we're gonna send folks over to, uh, Holiday by the tracks. Uh, it's about a block away from my house where I always see, uh, garbage out there. So hopefully we get enough volunteers to come on out for that event. There will be food served. Um, I think we're gonna have to go with, uh, Subway, so we can have the individual wrapped, uh, sandwiches and that. So, and I just want to, uh, remind everybody, because the people that were at the last meeting and agreed to come around, we need to wear our masks and make sure we're careful as possible. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Preswellis?
Um, I want, excuse me, I want to thank, uh, Mr. McCormick for his, uh, accolades. And, uh, I, I, I have a letter that was sent out in, uh, from the Department of Water Works. Uh, I believe everybody got a copy of it. And it talks about, because I've had a couple of phone calls about people getting their water turned off. There's not too much that I can do about that. But I think that, excuse me, the, uh, the administration should look at something to do for people that are hurting right now with, uh, uh, some kind of money. I don't know if, uh, the, uh, Water Department has any extra money, uh, sitting in one of their funds. But, uh, they, they should excuse, you know, it's just hard for me to capture, you know, people, uh, I understand that people have basic needs. They need to make, uh, their meals, wash their dishes, and I think it's kind of inhumane to cut their water off. Yeah, I don't, even if they were delinquent before COVID hit, that you need to have a little compassion here in, in these very hard times. And when, you know, when you shut people's water off, you also shut their toilet off. That's a heck of a thought, you know? Can't take a shower, no personal hygiene, can't go to the restroom. So I hope that, um, the administration works with the Water Department to come up with a methodology to help these people out. And also, I'm gonna be looking forward to working with, um, the Park Department and Mr. Mack. Mr. Mr. Mack and I had a few words already this evening. And, uh, you know, I'm always in the, I'm always in the mood, I'm always in the mood to negotiate. And, uh, I haven't been running away from anybody to sit down. But I, I do think that I take exceptions to some of the comments, uh, that were made tonight directed towards me. And, um, I believe that the record speaks for itself. That's why I went through their minutes, and I went through the history, and there was no activity. And I, I mean, I'll, uh, work with them, but I, I, I'm gonna get everybody a letter here. And I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna try to make it quick and, uh, read this one part of the plan. Is that the, uh, they're gonna separate the visitors from the resident. Okay? And it says here, I propose that we restrict parking in Washington Park Main Lot to the residents with season passes in direct all visitors to Fetter's Alley. So, with, with that being said, there's some, there's some, uh, room for negotiation because I don't think that that park should be open to any, you know, that, I want to know if it's paid visitors or if it's people that got passes to get in the park. So we'll be, I will be sitting down, hopefully putting a meeting together with Mr. Mack and Mr. Shin and, and the Police Department and coming back with some, uh, a good plan that protects everyone. Thank you.
Can I add something to Councilman Preswellis about the water? Um, I know that, um, the United Way- Um, I know that, um, the United Way, we funded, um, a grant to North Central Community Action Agency specifically for water bills, um, earlier this year. I don't know if there's any money still left in there, um, but I know that there was some funding, um, there. So if we're experiencing that, um, we can direct residents to, um, contact North Central Community Action Agency to see if there's any funding there. And then I'll follow up as well, because I know we still have some COVID grant money that we can provide to, to, to agencies that we haven't used, um, yet, that we received through, um, a grant through Indiana United Way. So I know there's some money to assist those that need, um, help with the water bill.
Thank, uh, Councilwoman. Councilwoman, uh, Ziegus?
I'd like to add to that, too. Uh, I also have, I have a webpage where I try to collect information, and there's, uh, a home team and a bunch of different organizations have come together, places to get help. And I was gonna say that they have utilities help, they have water help. So you could take a look at my website, it's my first and last name, if anyone's watching, dot com. And I also have a list of black-owned businesses that was curated by Kristi Golebik, and I took that on and I put that. So if you want a list of black-owned businesses in Michigan City, I have that on my website as well, so check it out. Plus, third thing, I think we have to sign something really important, just reminding everybody before you run.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other council comments? Any other council comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, uh, before we adjourn, just please do make sure you stop by the Clerk's Office and make sure you don't have anything to sign or sign whatever you have to sign before we get out of here, and everybody stay safe. Your motion to adjourn by Councilman Preswelliski, second by Councilwoman Deitch. All in favor, signify by saying aye. And opposed? Alrighty, we're adjourned.